And fellow council member colleagues, I called a special meeting to order at 6:07 PM, May 5th, 2025. City Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Hansa Romero.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember Mickey.
Here.
Vice Mayor McQuaid.
Here.
And Mayor Lopez.
Here. All right, we will jump straight into our study session, item two dash one, fiscal year 2025 to fiscal year 29, capital improvement project plan, study session. City staff.
Thank you, council members. Let me get our presentation up and going. Good evening again. Thank you for your patience as I work through my perpetual technical issues with getting presentations up and going. Tonight, we're going to be presenting about the fiscal year 25 to 29 CIP update with starting off with a study session to discuss kind of a project list and prioritization. And with me tonight, my name is Allison Correa, CIP Program Manager with the City of Albany Public Works. And with me tonight is Devora Zouter. Devora is our program manager. She is our expert at City of Albany specific funding measures, along with our local and state and understanding of funding. That, we'll jump into kind of an overview of the CIP plan, followed by kind of projects, considerations that staff made in kind of understanding projects, and then followed by an open session of discussion, questions, the rest. So currently, we're at the identify projects and priorities section of the CIP development, meaning that we're understanding our goals and needs through various planning document upgrades throughout the last four to six years, and before that as well for certain plans. We are now trying to find actionable projects for presentation tonight, and we'll move through with drafting up the actual CIP plan documents and project details for presentation at a later stage. Tonight is kind of a kickoff, and then followed at the end with city adoption. So just so that we have the same kind of overview of what a CIP plan is, there's a lot of things that go into it, capital projects versus CIP plan and program, but ultimately, what it is, is what are the city's goals? Those are the CIP projects. What do we want as our ultimate goal that we see in construction or through a planning process? And how's it different than the CIP plan and a CIP program? That's the specifics of how we achieve them. So the measurable goals and milestones in order to achieve our goals on each project. What do I mean by this? Our CIP plan is our long-term needs and goals, but identified on a five-year basis. And so what we have is, as we go around this circle here, we have an iterative process where our current goals and needs are identified. We identify projects that come out of these. We draft our CIP plan. We present it and we adopt it, and then we move forward with construction or plan document development. And this happens iteratively, and it's a living document, meaning that we don't have, you know, a specific date. All projects are included, and then we don't consider any projects after that. That would be infeasible, and, you know, it would be challenging in a city this complicated and large to do. We really have ongoing planning processes, budgeting processes, and implementation considerations. So what that means is, every so often, we do a CIP plan update. We do status reports, things change, and the plans build on each other. And so what we might see as a planning document in one plan becomes an actionable plan in the next for implementation or design, followed by actual construction in a following one. And so we may see the same projects come up over and over, but the goal is to be developing them and moving them forward at every stage, in order to achieve our ultimate city goals and priorities. So, how is a CIP plan organized? We have generally two approaches. We have a core program. This is preservation of existing assets, and it's taken on as an annual reinvestment into our city facilities. These are cyclic projects. Sewer projects are a perfect example. We have an existing sewer system, and we want to be renewing that sewer system on a regular basis, so that we don't end up with a lot of deferred maintenance to handle at a later date. And then we have discrete projects. These are projects that have clear starting and ends, enhancements. There are also planning documents, because planning documents then feed into programmatic development, but they have discrete beginnings and ends. And so having them under the core program as a discrete new planning document is challenging for us to be able to identify any kind of ongoing cyclic program. And so we've pulled those out to kind of be able to talk about more specifically. Periodic small updates may be incorporated into a core program, but these, the large-scale updates really should be considered as a discrete project. So going back to that circle earlier of what we need to do, this is looking forward-looking at what our CIP plan process is, and where we are. Again, we're at, you know, that identify actionable projects and priorities. And how do our planning documents then feed in? I think it's important to note that a planning document isn't a one-time, one-time project or a one-time plan. Planning document both feeds into the projects we're performing, as well as identifying the specifics within the project. And for tonight's presentation, we're primarily focused not on what's shown in that yellow, which is where our goals, needs, planning documents are identifying specifics of the project. We're primarily focusing on what projects need to be included, and what projects are actionable. And so we may not be talking about the specific type of pipe to install in the underground, but we do want to talk about the overall goal of that project, and understanding of where that fits into all the other priorities we have. With that, I'm going to turn over to Devora a little bit to talk about our funding strategy.
Thanks, Allison. So, a big part of the CIP is not just putting together this puzzle of our needs, our wants, our goals, and seeing how those all fit together into a picture of what our vision is for the next five years. It's mapping our financial resources to go along with that. And part of that strategy is to allocate our most stable funding sources for these core programs, and making sure that the core work of our city isn't neglected, that it isn't underfunded. For more discrete projects, whether renewal or enhancements, we try to seek strategic grant funding to supplement the resources we have, as those resources that we do have can't possibly cover all of the hopes and dreams that we have for Albany. We also consider our funding across the different programs that we run as a city. We consider the resources we have in terms of the capital budget and the operating budget. We have our, we work in tandem with our finance department to ensure that resources that are shared between capital and operating are allocated sensibly and proportionally within this whole puzzle. And another piece of this puzzle, which we'll talk about in just a moment, is that a key piece of the strategy is regular replenishment or strategy around reserve funding. Period. I'll turn it back to you.
So, we have a fairly developed project list, as you probably saw in the agenda tonight. So, we do want to, we only have an hour to talk about all our projects, so we do want to focus in. And so before we get into the project list, kind of set us up for success by talking about what are we looking for tonight? What could help staff the most in terms of being able to come back with actionable items for the next presentation? And these include, are we missing any major projects on this list? Is there something that we have not identified that we think might be actionable? Any criteria for consideration that we may want to consider, so that we may want to think about as staff for how we prioritize and schedule projects? Any prioritization considerations between and within the project categories? And what this means is, while we might have a large transportation list, when we have a priority one in a transportation, and a priority one in our parks, or some other project, some other category, how do you want us to kind of understand your thoughts on this? Because, not because the funding may cross on those, but because our staff resources do. And so we do really have to have an understanding of either prioritization or focus, or, you know, if it's, everything is, needs prioritization across, then we may have to deliver both at a slower rate. And so those things are just things that we're going to think about over the next month or so, to figure out how do we deliver these projects to the extent feasible, given our funding, budget, and schedules, and staff resources. And then, lastly, are there any projects on a list that we should consider for phasing? Meaning, a lot of the projects on our list, we show costs from, basically, as we leave planning, and then all the way through to construction, completion of construction. And so some of those become very large costs. There's some trade-offs there if we considered phasing them, which is, do we want to engage in starting our design, and then have a waiting period until we can find funding? Or do we want to make sure that we can go through design and immediately start construction? And there's trade-offs one way and the other, based on, you know, do we have to potentially redesign? If we start design now and it's a little too early, will we have to redesign because our considerations have changed? Industry is changing rapidly on the transportation front. Will we have to redesign in four years if we were waiting for funding? But also, having that, having that time gives us an opportunity to look for grant funding. And so it's going to be a balancing act, I think, on some of these projects that we're talking about tonight. Moving backwards, because it looks like I skipped a slide, some of the considerations that staff are looking at in terms of developing a CIP plan list. And so we have legal mandates, regulatory requirements, and these are, a few of our various programs have compliance requirements. We want to look at stabilizing or reducing our operating costs. We want to prolong the functional life of assets. We want to improve our city services, address risk reduction and avoidance. We want to look at opportunities for outside funding. Some projects are more grant fundable than others. We're definitely looking at protection of public health and safety. That's a high priority. Community support is really important on delivery of these projects. One of the key things with a CIP plan and the projects within them, is that once it arrives into the CIP plan, where we are committing funding towards it, and not committing funding to other projects, is if we find that a project is not actionable, and we spend too long trying to make decisions, we're not, we're not being the most efficient with our ability to deliver the larger program, the CIP program as a whole. So community support is very important. And we're focusing on active and actionable projects within the time horizon of the CIP. We have quite a few projects ongoing, including two large projects, Marion Avenue, curb ramp and pavement rehabilitation project, and a project that will be soon coming up for Brighton Sewer Work. This is a very large easement project in the north part of the City of Albany. And with that, Public Works staff are going to be stretched thin for the next year and a half or so. And so when we're looking at projects within the time horizon of the CIP, we might be talking about moving projects forward in planning and design, but maybe not in construction unless something urgent comes up that we need to prioritize it. But those kinds of reprioritizations are things we'd be great to talk about tonight. And again, with a living and iterative capital improvement plan, if our staff find these need to discuss prioritization and reprioritization, we would come to you with new projects and kind of discuss. We're going to kick this off with, we're going to start, I think, every, one of these categories of projects or programs, we're going to start with kind of an overview of what our core program, core program is, along with the funding that supports it. And then we will dive into the more discrete projects out of that. And so for our right-of-way, there's two main programs. Our annual street rehabilitation program, this is an ongoing program that's driven by data, by data-driven through the pavement management plan. The pavement management plan is a bi-yearly plan update that we partner with MTC, Municipal Transportation Commission, on to deliver a citywide survey of street conditions. That condition survey is then evaluated to make sure that our street selection, or to ensure to the extent feasible, that our street selection focuses on keeping our good streets in good condition, and tackling our streets in poor condition to the extent feasible, and not letting our streets in good condition fail unnecessarily in the meantime. We are doing, we are going to have an update to our pavement management plan kicking off this fall. So this, this program is currently shown as a continuation of the existing program, but updates to the pavement management plan will be coming to Transportation Commission in the spring, followed by likely a presentation at City Council to discuss ongoing reinvestments into this program. This program primarily covers street rehabilitation, but it also does include pavement maintenance, preventative maintenance, meaning preservation treatments, patch paving. It does minor repairs to curb and gutters, often caused by tree root damage, and other minor work such as that. And then we also have our annual sidewalk rehabilitation program, and this has been a really successful program. We, this is every, this is managed through a five-year, sorry about that, five-year ongoing sidewalk survey that provides data for us to be able to identify repairs. We then follow up with annual sidewalk repair projects. One is currently out for, forbid current, at this moment, and we're hopefully, we'll hopefully see that in the next several weeks, come back to council. And then Devora's going to jump in a little bit to talk about our funding sources that we use on the right-of-way.
So, yes, so for each of these five categories, you'll see us alternate about this point to talk about the different funding sources very briefly for, separated for these functional areas. So for right-of-way, we see funds from the state, pass-through funds from the state. We have regional pass-through funds from Alameda CTC. We have two, our two local taxes, the street and storm drain tax, and our local sidewalk and pathway repair tax. And then we have some grants that have been awarded to us for projects that are active, but the, those are sort of the larger scope of, of what our reliable funding sources are. We also, we also get state pass-through funds from gas taxes, which are allocated to support our public right-of-way program in maintenance and operations, and there is potential there for it to be shared with capital projects as needed.
So, jumping into, we're starting big. This is our largest of the categories. This is our largest of the categories. This is the list of projects we have that we've shared on the agenda tonight. What we've done is, we had a lot of projects that were enhancements or discrete projects, I should say. And we wanted to further subdivide it for ease of kind of review and understanding of what's going on. And so I'm just going to briefly go through what these different columns mean. And so, oops, this is not working. All right. I'm going to use my pointer, because this is not working wonderfully. But we have our programmatic projects or programs here, as we just spoke about them. These are our core. We need to make sure our maintenance and rehabilitation work is ongoing so that we do not incur significant amounts of deferred maintenance that we then have to spend much more money to catch up on. Followed by our capital renewal and regulatory projects. These are projects where this is an existing asset that doesn't easily fit into a program. We have here on the first, on the first one here is the Buchanan Bridge resurfacing project. This is, has a Highway Bridge Program Grant Fund to help supplement some of the costs. Upper Solano Avenue, that's another project that is more of a renewal, say, than an enhancement project. And we'll talk about that in a little bit. The next column is enhancements in progress. So these are projects where we're actively working on enhancements, whether that be in design or in construction. And many of them, at least on the transportation front, have grant funding identified, followed by enhancements potential. So these are projects where we think they may be actionable in the near term or they're more likely to be actionable even on the near, on the short term in design and planning, again, with our, with our construction projects for Marion Avenue and Brighton Avenue, where our construction delivery will be postponed a little bit in the next year or so. But there may be opportunities to be able to move forward design on these enhancements. However, they do come with potentially need to increase costs for bringing on project managers, because staff will be, will be busy. So, again, going back to our considerations and discussion items, some of these prioritizations also come with some cost impacts. And then finally, we have major projects. These are projects that aren't just enhancements to the right-of-way we're reimagining to a certain extent, or they're major projects where they're crosscategories. So Marion Avenue pavement and curb ramp rehabilitation is a cross, a cross-category project, which it includes storm drains, signal improvements, and kind of various amounts of work for different programs. And we really wanted to make sure it doesn't get mixed in with kind of a programmatic project or capital renewal. And it's a little bit more time and effort needed and complexity. And so with that, I'm going to do is, I'm going to jump into talking about specific projects in a little more depth. If I don't mention the project, it doesn't mean that we're not thinking this is a priority. Again, they are just one, for the most part, these are ones that may not have come to council attention or ones where there's some more kind of discussions involved. And so we wanted to highlight them, but it, it's not a kind of a staff recommendation necessarily. I don't want it to be taken that way. So we're going to show, show first our annual street rehabilitation and sidewalk. Following up, one of the projects that we're seeing, that we're presenting here tonight is the Upper Solano curb ramps project. This is related to an ADA settlement. The deadline for that settlement for replacement of, or for installation of ADA compliant curb ramps along Upper Solano Avenue, the deadline is December 2029. We're anticipating design on this project to be fairly intense, given, given its location on a major corridor. And so we are showing it here, anticipating the need to begin design on that. This is specific to curb ramps. We also have some other projects that may overlap with some of the Solano Avenue limits, which I'll discuss in a few seconds. We also have a shared-use path renewal project. This is also one that hasn't come up yet, but in the last 12 years, we've installed almost two miles of shared-use path in the city, which is a major accomplishment. However, at 12 years old, it is now due for some renewal work. We should be maintaining it. So, the way it's presented currently is a single project covering the Aloney Greenway, Buchanan Bike Way and a portion of shared-use path near Sprouts on San Pablo Avenue. We have also fairly recently completed a streetlight evaluation, which identified some high priority projects, including renewing our existing streetlights. We have a lot of failures which need replacement for, of the LEDs. One of the challenges with streetlights, LED streetlights, which we now have based, from early 2010s project, most, about 95% of our lights are now LEDs. But one of the challenges with that is LED lights fail by diodes, not by on-off. And so there's a slow progression towards failure, which is sometimes not as visible to residents and requires a kind of more active management of it than if it's just an on-off and you can report in. And with that, this streetlight renewal project, we have, LEDs generally have about a 10-year lifespan, design life, and we're more than 10 years out. And so on the operating side, we have increased our replacement rates, but it will not catch up without some additional support from our capital project. And so this project proposes to provide some increased rates of replacement, focused on, focused on the streetlight evaluation recommendations for prioritization, meaning first at priority sidewalks intersections, followed by mid-block residential. This is outside of our operating, so we would continue doing operating replacements. However, this would allow us to catch up. And so what we don't want is to end up in the same situation we are currently in, which is all of our streetlights approaching 12 years, 13 years of age and replacement all at once. And so this project would propose to replace them in a couple of phases and spreading it out while still handling operating level replacements, full replacements, when they're fully out or approaching, approaching that need for replacement. This would target getting them all to have a wider spread of ages. And so we can then reincorporate it fully under our operating program. And so that's kind of what's being proposed here. We also had a critical intersection lighting upgrades project identified in the streetlight evaluation. And this is at seven locations around the city of Albany, based on data that was considered to identify that streetlight was a component of some, some concerns, whether that be accidents or other kinds of car accidents, pedestrian collision, bike collisions, things like that. For these seven locations, one of them is being incorporated onto a Alameda CTC project located at Keynes and Solano Avenue. Two other locations are on Key Route and Washington Avenue and Sonoma and Ventura Avenue. The remaining of them, the remaining four of them are located on Solano Avenue. And so we're proposing this project to take care of some of those streetlight upgrades in order to improve some of the lighting at those intersections. Staff are currently considering using either in-place with a standard streetlight where we tie into an existing electrical system where, where available, but also evaluating whether solar power on some, in order to get them in sooner, might be possible. The solar industry for street lighting has significantly improved. And so at this point, it might be an opportunity. And then, talking about, I think, where most of our projects are coming from, the active transportation plan. So this specific, we're talking about the update, which is actively in process. But what I want to also highlight is that currently, active projects, we have one project for the Pier Street path, two different segments of that. And this is our remaining Tier Zero project from the previous ATP. We also have some active transportation Tier One projects that are potentially actionable and are, are fairly regularly discussed at Transportation Commission. Some traffic calming projects. And so what we're seeing here is a lot of active transportation and traffic calming improvements and an active, active transportation plan update. And so, suggestion here is for us to continue discussing priorities in the active transportation plan, but make sure that we understand which projects are in process in those discussions and which ones have not had actionable movement in some time. I think it's important that we tie our active transportation plan update with our CIP in that sense, so that we make sure we're not reprioritizing away from work that we're actively working on and developing without good reason. With that, I'm going to pass it over to Devora.
That's okay. So, just to bring up a view of, we'll, we'll speed through this and then we can come back to it during discussion. But just to put out a broad list of estimated costs for these project, projects, you can see at the, the end of the list, we have far more desires and that we can likely pull off in a five-year time span, even if we are very lucky with grant funding. One thing, one piece of good news with that bottom-line number is that we were, MTC has selected us for a construction grant for our Cleveland Bike Way, which is great news. And of course, that comes with a caveat that to be able to deliver that project, there is a paving and storm drain project that goes with it. So this is one of the, the things where we might get grant funding, but it comes with strings that don't, it doesn't mean, just because we get grant funding doesn't mean that project is immediately deliverable. Go ahead. Thank you. Another thing we consider as part of our programs is, like we mentioned, trade-offs. Which projects are more grant fundable potentially? And which projects may have a high price tag when we could deliver more projects over a longer time span instead? So we look at all of that in this kind of planning, for example. So for example, we could potentially invest in Keynes Adams or there are a number of smaller projects that could also be, that could also be considered for, for delivery. So, we think, I think we have a sense that, you know, oh, we have a project, like, let's go for grant funding. Transportation funding especially right, in general and right now, is quite oversubscribed at the regional, at the, so we got very lucky with, and with our Cleveland Bike Way. But in general, these programs are quite, like I mentioned, quite oversubscribed. And there are concerns with federal funding at the moment. So, we, when looking at our list of projects, the, these six projects are the ones that would likely be the most appealing to grant programs. And that's no assurance that they would get grant funded, but generally, our efforts around kind of basic capital renewal or smaller enhancements that don't have regional significance are less appealing to grant programs. So we have to consider our available funding with, and our desire for certain timelines with the risks we're willing to take on, on submitting, on prioritizing our available resources versus going for something that's less certain. So to roll up this category, we, in the, the shorter term, will be prioritizing among these different kinds of projects that, and that Allison mentioned. Our core programs will, will remain, will prioritize our funding towards delivering that core work. And our two streetscape projects on the horizon will have a significant cost impact. So we will need to strategize going forward about, you know, as our discussions around those streetscapes evolve, what the funding potential is for those projects. And I'll just point out that we have two projects that are being delivered, one by, by city staff and one by Alameda CTC, that do not, that, for which the costs of the city are in staff time. Alameda CTC is covering the design costs and, for the Jackson Bike Way Phase Two and has incorporated the Phase Two of the San Pablo pedestrian improvements into their near-term project on San Pablo, saving the city an estimated over $5 million in, in active transportation improvements.
With that, and a reminder that we are running out of time, I may be doing a slightly shorter presentation on these other categories, but I, I am hopeful that they are more straightforward as well. On our parks and open space, we have proposed a new annual parks rehabilitation program. This is a program where we are focusing on court refresh, ballfield refresh, play structure renewals. And we will go into kind of capital funding sources real quick with Devora.
Oh, yes. Thank you. With parks and open space, we're fortunate to have two local funding sources. Measure M Parks and Open Space Parcel Tax and our Assessment District 88-1. Of course, those funding sources are shared with operating costs in our parks, open space and urban forestry programs. Urban forestry, as well as our street lighting from our right-of-way category, do not have, currently have a dedicated source of funding. So funding for similar and appropriate resources is shared among those areas. We also have the capital resources and development impact fees. And we've been very fortunate to receive some grants, both for Albany Hill and for our parks improvement projects.
So with that, a quick dive in, very quick. We have our annual parks rehabilitation program. One of our new projects that we're proposing is a citywide turf audit. This was in the Parks Master, Parks and Open Space Master Plan. And the rationale here is that we have some programming projects that are being proposed. These are to reimagine some of our existing parks where the recreational activities may be able to be improved. And our citywide turf audit will go a long way to making sure we understand where we need turf, but also how best to manage it and where turf may not be appropriate. And so we think that this project is one that will support various projects and programs. We also have a very high demand from the community for sand volleyball court. And notion of you has been identified as a potential location. And Pier Street Park programming, both Aloney Greenway and Pier Street Park have a nexus with the active transportation desires with either a shared-use path proposed or one that existing, runs through it as an existing condition.
So when we look at our total costs in parks and open space, for parks, as I mentioned, we're quite fortunate with our resources and due to a prioritization of transportation projects, we actually have our sense at this moment with these projects, as is in the parks section of the list in front of you, is that we can likely deliver these projects. We likely have the funds to deliver this list of projects. It would depend if any scopes were, were increased or we would have to sort of develop these projects as they go. But there is much less concern in that area at the moment than there is with transportation. Where there is concern is, of course, with our Albany Hill Eucalyptus project. We completed our planning effort and that planning effort created three, or proposed three projects and adopted three planned projects. We have submitted the first project for a federal grant and will, are waiting on the results and conditions associated with that. And, but our, the combined costs for Project Two and Three, Projects Two and Three will likely approach $2 million. So in general, we are looking at how to, we're constantly looking for other grants to fund those projects and looking to program some, small amounts of local funds to be matching funds for those grants.
My favorite two categories, but these will probably be the shortest of all. We have an ongoing sewer rehabilitation program. This is guided by a consent decree. We'll be returning this fall with a presentation to go over what this consent decree entails, what we're seeing in coming years, but we're effectively looking towards continuing our existing program for the next three years, followed by a potential reduction in fiscal year 58 and 59, or 28 and 29, dependent on how some check-ins happen in the next several years. And so this is a little bit of an uncertain kind of costs we're proposing, or showing right here. On annual storm drains, these are, this is a program that focuses on storm drain repair. It really does not have enough funding to take on major increases in our storm drain system. Small repairs, adding a lateral with a catch basin, that's really the extent of what we can accomplish with this kind of funding. Anything beyond that, we are looking at alternative ways of delivering.
For our sewer program, we, it is entirely funded, both operating and capital via our sewer enterprise fee. And additionally, we fund our storm drain rehab program with our revenues from our street and storm drain parcel tax. We will have a better sense of our longer-term costs when we complete our currently in progress watershed management plan. We also have a clean water program fee, which is primarily purpose towards operating, but there are, there are shares of it that are allocated towards appropriate efforts in capital.
So on this front, I think one of the one, the projects that is maybe the least familiar to council is our 2027 green infrastructure project. This is a municipal regional permit 3.0 requirement to, that is not triggered by paving. This is to augment additional green infrastructure. All cities and agencies are required to provide a numeric retrofit, and this is based on the size of the city. We have, we have delivered a small component of this and we have, it's a fairly small amount to begin with, but we have about half an acre remaining that we have to deliver of collected areas. And that feeds into our watershed management plan update because the costs of some of these regulatory requirements do not fall under our paving program necessarily. And our improvements that we desire on our water, on our storm drainage also do not fall under our storm drain program at this time. And so the watershed management plan update is expected to identify our needs and any funding that goes into being able to deliver improvements.
Not a lot of detail to add here, except to say that we don't actually, we don't currently have a funding source that is appropriate for green infrastructure, other than general fund, but we are looking into other sources of funding and we'll report back.
Buildings and core program, buildings and facilities. City of Albany has a number of buildings and facilities, and it says TBD per year at this point. We are proposing to do an asset and condition assessment to identify our needs, to be able to know what kind of funding we need to reinvest into deferred maintenance and ongoing renewals.
Our current sources of funding for city buildings and facilities are very limited. We have a city buildings reserve fund that is not regularly replenished and for which there's no current strategy for replenishment. We have a limited amount of funds in that, in that fund for which we are proposing to use for the needs assessment and pending reserve fund policy development to potentially be able to allocate some within the CIP to something else.
What we want to highlight is that we have a certain amount of projects upcoming that we're proposing to support various maintenance needs, but also there's a carb regulation, city fleet electrification that is required, is a regulatory requirement, and we are proposing a plan to identify how to transition city fleets. This may be a very straightforward process, but having that planning activity is one that we need to, we need to start as soon as possible so that we can identify how we plan to do the transition. Climate Action and Adaptation Plan also identifies city buildings electrification as a high, a high priority. Our city buildings and facilities needs assessment is likely to be one of the supporting documents to making sure that we understand what we have in our buildings, what needs replacement, so we can create a comprehensive city buildings electrification plan. And so are currently looking at these three projects, plus a civic center space planning to understand both what our current needs are and what our coming needs are. We also have a library refresh project. This is using the library maintenance fund. Firehouse floor renewals. And so what we're seeing through these various projects that I'm quickly showing here is a need for asset maintenance and renewals. We also have opportunities for potentially renewing revenue generating space or increasing our revenue in generating space, and I think it's important when we're talking about prioritization that we identify those as well as maybe one of the criteria we discuss.
So in general, you can see that our, we have quite a slate of needs that exceed several million, plus whatever is identified in any of our planning efforts. And there should be a conversation around this long-term as to how we can fund capital improvement, how we can fund capital improvement and maintenance to our facilities.
So lastly, our other, other programs. We don't have any other programs, but we do have a lot of needs on our landfill side. So on our funding.
We've previously funded a relatively small amount into our landfill reserve, and we have two active projects that Allison will, will mention. But in general, we, much like our buildings reserve, we don't have a current replenishment policy for that fund. And with capital needs coming up for larger projects, we will need to strategize about how to fulfill those needs.
So what we have on our landfill side is just no program, but there is regulatory requirements for it. We do have a long-term flood protection plan that identifies some near-term and long-term needs based on Waterboard's review of our abandoned landfill or the inactive landfill. And in those, within the horizon of the CIP, is a potential for some near-term sea level rise projects. And so we've put it on the horizon. The long-term flood protection plan is currently being reviewed by Waterboard's. So we're uncertain about kind of the exact timeline on this, but it may be moved from on the horizon into an active project sooner than we think.
So genuine, like generally, things have surprised us, or we have, we have come across regulatory requirements that we were not necessarily financially prepared for in this past CIP cycle. We do manage a closed landfill, and that comes with significant costs, restrictions, et cetera, for capital renewal and improvement. So I'll just be a bit of a broken record and mention that we do, we do need to consider that long-term.
I do apologize for how long this presentation has gone on and how short the time we have for discussion is now. So it sounds like we, we may have to have some continuation on discussions, but with that, suggested approach is to discuss by categories, but I don't know that we have the time for that. So I think at this point, we should just open it up for questions and run it however you see fit from here on, given our short timeframe.
And Mayor, just to add, we are totally fine starting the 7:00 PM meeting later. It's just that we don't start it earlier. So if the discussion continues, that's fine.
Thank you, city staff, for the report. I'll bring it to council if any of you have questions at this time.
Thank you very much, both of you. It's quite a, quite a puzzle. I appreciate the work you do, trying to fit it all together. I guess just overall, in that regard, under that rubric of you can get any two of three in construction, fast, cheap, or good, I'm more oriented towards less expensive and good than fast. And that puts me in a place of saying, you all know better than I do, given massive complexities of funding and everything else, probably what should come first, what should come second. I mean, it's, it's changing all the time as grants come in, funding changes and everything else, so I don't really feel equipped to say what is a priority. I mean, I think all the things that are on the list are a priority for the community. That's why they're on the list. They've already been through a planning process. So that's kind of deliberation, but there are some questions. I see development of the new ATP is included as a capital project, which I'm not sure I've seen that sort of thing in a capital improvement project plan before. I'm fine with it being there, but I don't know if you have any comment on that.
With this, it has been included in previous CIPs, these kinds of planning efforts. I think the reason it was included here, my goal here was to identify kind of the range of considerations, both kind of planning level and also make sure that we understand holistically what's going on. Sometimes if planning documents are kind of handled outside of the CIP, well, not handled, they're, they're handled through community development, through public engagement, but if they are not shown on the CIP, we don't see how things relate back in a kind of trackable way. I think it's important that we both show where projects come from, have that kind of overview. And then although not so much on this CIP, I think there is, there is something that we need to talk about, about projects which may have been proposed at some point, but the conditions have changed and now we need to gently retire them, find alternatives. And so I think there is a discussion there on how to do that. That may not be part of this CIP, but that is something just to keep things tidy and forward-looking, that we also, when projects no longer are appropriate for continuation because of change conditions, that we also look at ways of gently retiring them and kind of getting it off of staff's radar so they don't pop up unexpectedly in a later date.
I'll also, just to add one piece of nuance to that, is that we, in, in this case, the ATP was funded through the community development operating budget. In future years or in other planning efforts, they are sometimes funded through additional appropriations or treated as a capital project financially. So that's one reason for including it.
Okay, thank you. Notice that the Parks Master Plan has year, which I think was zero to three at the time of adoption year, and medium term, which was four to seven or something like that, projects. I don't know that necessarily all of those were included, but maybe they were. I don't know if you could speak to what was included from the Parks Master Plan or not.
Certainly. So one thing I did not cover in this meeting is that we did go to both Parks Rec and Open Space and to Transportation Commission ahead of coming here. And in, in that presentation where we were diving a little bit more into the Parks Master Plan is showing which projects had been completed or which ones may tie into some other project that we're proposing that covers maybe multiple things. And I would say we're either actively working on, in some of the Prop 68 projects, or have incorporated some of those near-term, the very near-term, zero to three years. The remaining ones have to do more with kind of recreational changes or websites, things like that, that are not really a public works purview. So for the public works ones, I would say that we're primarily covered on the short term through current projects and what we're suggesting here. And moving into the midterm, I think, three to seven-year time horizon.
Thank you. Was the MTC grant for construction, I kind of had in, I got in my mind that it was for planning and engineering of the path through Peggy.
So we have, I apologize if I misspoke, we have an MTC grant that was recently awarded for, for, from their climate programs, Active Transportation Design Assistance for the Pierce Cleveland Bike Way Connection Project.
Okay.
And we recently, as in this last week, received news that we've gotten another grant from Alameda CTC for the Cleveland Bike Way. Yes, we are very, thank you. We have a great team and we're very, very fortunate to, we have a great consultant who helps us with these, so worth, worth their weight in gold.
I didn't miss it. It's more money. Right on.
Thank you.
Would a storm drain fee update be able to fund green infrastructure if we were able to, to get there?
So storm drain funding is a complicated beast right now with Prop 218. We're looking into potential options, and that's certainly one of the things we're considering.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions from council members? Not seeing any other questions. Do we have any questions or comments from the public regarding this study session item? All right, bring it right back to council if we have any other further discussions. I believe we do not need to make an action on, on this item, aside from providing input to city staff.
I do have comments. So would it be appropriate analogous to including the, development of the new active transportation plan to include the street tree management plan and the watershed master plan, if I have the terms right, as in the capital improvement project plan?
So the watershed management plan is currently shown on the list.
Okay, I apologize. Thank you.
The street tree management plan, I think that it's kind of trailing off, it's, it's reaching kind of the end, but it's certainly something we could report on through the CIP. I think the one difference there is perhaps it's not dealing with capital projects as much with street trees, it's more of an operating cost, but I don't see why reporting on it would be a problem at all. It's just another project sheet to kind of discuss.
Thanks. I've, I've caught in the advisory bodies I've listened to that, that currently is drafted, which is not the final, that there's a goal to increase canopy, which would have an investment over a certain number of years to increase the number of trees, which seems like an enhancement. So kind of feels like a capital project to me, but I could see it being viewed as not a capital project.
Whether we fund it through capital or operating will depend on what funding sources we can find for the project. If it's something that could be incorporated into operating, we could do it on a phased timeframe, so we don't, this is really a Mark topic, but I was going to try to field it.
Why don't I jump in here? So Mark Hurley, Public Works Director. I think the street tree management plan will more inform what we do on the operations side, so we will be investing in street tree planting, but it's probably more so in the maintenance and care of trees once they're planted. So I think that doesn't fit the model necessarily of a, of a capital project. Likewise, on this, on the streetlights, we have a capital project to relamp the rest of the city, where we actually just, I know this question's coming, but we just authorized Alameda County to purchase the remainder of the lights to replace all the failed and failing lights, so that should be done here pretty soon. But once that's done, it falls into more of an operating side of things, so it's just maintenance of the, the lights. When things fail, we'll replace them. So I think the street tree fits more on the operating side, and what, what the result of the street tree management plan might do is give us a, a budget to inform a different way of maintaining street trees.
Thank you. Thanks. The, so I don't know if this would be a capital, a capital project, but the council strategic plan, one of the goals, objective under a goal, I can't remember which, which hierarchy, was to expand open space, which for myself, what was behind that was the thought of buying the 11-acre Golden Gate Development Company property on the hill, which is currently private property. That be a capital project?
I would say no. I think that would be a, and I'm looking guidance from the bench, but my gut feeling would be no, because we're not constructing something. You figure a project has a start and an end, or a program that we're, you know, investing once the property would be acquired, it would be a capital project to develop it.
Very good.
I'll just say also that we are absolutely aware of I'll just say also that we are absolutely aware of that goal and are keeping our finger on the pulse of funding that could potentially be available for that, should it become something that we prioritize.
Thank you so much. And I guess, given the moment in time on the clock and that people are waiting, I will end it there and say thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jordan. Any other?
I'll be short, I'll be quick. I really appreciate the presentation, particularly the slideshow helped me understand a little bit more. I think the thing that stood out to me are, in your, in the CIP list, you have listed things that are outside of our control, in the sense that ADA, meeting the ADA requirements is an absolute, we have to be done by 2029. And then there are other items that scare me a little bit, the landfill, so dealing with landfill in the sense that that's up there, $15 million by the time we get around to it, maybe that's $15 million in today's dollars. And that's something that is going to be mandated that we have to do. And so it's completely out of our control, again, on a timeline basis also. Fingers crossed a little bit that Prop 4 climate change funding can be used towards that, because otherwise I'm not sure where we come up with $15 million very quickly. But what I do want to say is I appreciate your presentation, I appreciate staff's continued efforts to creatively find ways to get our projects done, both from a funding standpoint and from an implementation standpoint. And as Councilmember Jordan said earlier, I think, you know, I appreciate that you're asking us to take a bigger picture look at like where we would like to strategize, but understand that you all with boots on the ground are going to know what's fastest and, sorry, what is, not necessarily the fastest, but what's the, what's the best quality we're going to get and for the fee that we can spend. So I really appreciate that. And I'll stop there.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, I just really want to compliment your department, both of you, on the presentation, because I think that it's, it's very important for our community as well as the rest of us on council to understand the parameters and the barriers that you have to look at and the challenges that you have to fit within several complexities of things. So I just, I want to applaud you both for working on this so diligently. And, you know, I think it's, it's about effectiveness and efficiencies and doing things in the right timing, in the right priorities. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
I actually didn't remember one item that I'm not sure is ready to be a project, but I've been really nervous about losing the verbal commitment to it from UC, which is to finish the Village Creek path between where it exists currently and Jackson. We got a verbal commitment from the appropriate vice chancellor and retires, then I think it's going to walk out the door with him. So we don't have any funding for it, we haven't designed it or anything else, so I don't know how to embed that and make sure that we don't lose that. Try to, I mean, I think probably more important is if we could capture it in writing with UC is more important than including it in the CIP, so that it can have some institutional memory that lives past that vice chancellor's tenure.
Can you, can you repeat the limits? I'm not understanding which project that is.
So Village Creek, there's a path along Village Creek around the Sprouts property, around Spouts, Sprouts, if you will. Yeah.
Understood now. I was thinking Cerito, so that's, that's.
No problem.
Thank you very much.
I'll join in the parade of thank you, because you gave us a wonderful presentation. One of the things I appreciated was that you acknowledged staff capacity. I think it's easy for us to just kind of think, we'll just do it, but I really appreciate that piece. You know, in thinking about the CIP, I always kind of think of it as linear, like we do this, and then we do this, and then we do this. This makes it really clear, and I knew this, but it makes it more clear, I guess, that it is kind of a circular tangled web of craziness. And I, I just, I want to say that, you know, we all probably have our own priorities, but I really appreciate your ability to tease out what's most important and what we have the funding for and what makes sense to do in a certain order. And I think that's great. So thank you very much. And thank you for whoever responded today to my questions.
Again, to echo that, thank you very much. Assuming we have no further feedback and comment from city council, here at the dice, I feel that it's safe to go ahead and close this study session out. And with that said, I will adjourn the special meeting.
Mayor, may I ask that we take a small break between meetings?
Thank you for sitting through our very long presentation. I appreciate your time.
Members of the city council and community, Slaz, Zokamati, Omateo, today is May 5th, 2025. I call this regular meeting to order at 7:21 PM. Excuse me. And I'll start off with our land acknowledgement. The City of Albany recognizes that we occupy the land originally protected by the Confederated Villages of Leishan. We acknowledge the genocide that took place on these lands and must make strides to repay the moral debt that is owed to this indigenous people, specifically the Aloney tribe. We thank them for their contributions, which have transformed our community and will continue to bring forth growth and unity. The City of Albany commit to sustaining ongoing relationship with the tribe and together build a better future for all that now make this their home. City Clerk, Roca.
Councilmember Hansa Ramara.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember Mickey.
Here.
Vice Mayor McQuaid.
Here.
And Mayor Lopez.
Here. All right, we had no closed session. We'll jump straight into ceremonial matters. We have several proclamation this evening, and I do appreciate those who are receiving the proclamation this evening for being patient. I know we started a little late, and I swear it had nothing to do with Cinco de Mayo. We were doing, we had serious business to attend to. We will start off with our first proclamation, which will be read by Councilmember John Mickey. The Proclamation for American Muslim Appreciation and Awareness Month, which will be received by Musa and Hanyan, and I believe they will request a photo afterwards.
American Muslim Appreciation and Awareness Month, April 2025. Whereas enriched by the unparalleled diversity of its residents, the City of Albany takes great pride in supporting individual religious freedoms and is strengthened by the many varied religious, political, and cultural traditions and contributions to its diverse populations, including those that practice Islam. And whereas Muslims have been part of the US history from the beginning and have contributed to the production of wealth and construction of the nation, they have also, they are also part of the rich history of the civil rights movement. And whereas over 90,000 Muslims live in Alameda County and make innumerable contributions to the cultural, political, economic fabric and well-being of California and the United States. And whereas the Aaron and Margaret Wallace Foundation, founded in 1957, provides basic necessities to over 30,000 individuals per month, including hot meals, fresh produce, toys, books, and more. Brother Abdul Jalil Al Hakim and brother Bilal Salih Essa were instrumental in supporting the Albany community, providing food, hygiene supplies, and hot meals. Bilal, who served not just the Albany community, but also the Oakland Islamic Center and the Juma Free Farmers Market, dedicated his life to service and uplifting his community and beyond. On September 19th, 2022, Bilal lost his life to senseless gun violence, but his legacy to support the underserved communities lives through AMWF, his family and loved ones. And whereas the A to Z Foundation was established in 2014 to serve the Bay Area community by improving access to healthcare and expanding their services to provide over 35,000 pounds of food, including fresh produce and shelf-stable items to Albany families. And whereas Talil Miramalek, civil rights activist, advocate for workers, tenants, and immigrants in Albany and surrounding communities by offering pro bono services at the Central Legal, Legal de la Raza, Workers and Tenants Rights Clinic in Oakland, and the East Bay Community Law Center's Immigration Clinic in Berkeley. Talil also co-founded Law Students for Radical Real Estate, which supports the Sustainable Economics Law Center's outreach efforts with various groups to create alternatives to extractive capitalism. Additionally, she is the co-founder of the Free the Land Project and played an active role in the Afghan humanitarian parole project. And whereas the City of Albany has had distinct privileges of Muslim-American and Arab representation and experiences in local elected offices, which includes current Albany School Board Member Sadia Khan, who has facilitated advocacy in numerous ways for housing, ways for housing and educational equity for families in Albany. And whereas it is appropriate to acknowledge and promote awareness of the myriad of invaluable contributions of Muslims in California and across the country, and to provide them the respect and acknowledgement every person deserves. And whereas the City of Albany benefits from the presence and work of local parent groups in the school districts such as the Southwest Asian, Greater Middle East, and North Africa SWANA Parent Engagement Group that have uplifted visibility and representations of Muslim-American and Arab families that identify with SWANA. Now therefore, the City of Albany does hereby recognize the California State designation of April 2025 as American Muslim Appreciation and Awareness Month, to acknowledge the rich history, contributions, and guiding virtues of Muslims, and to commend all Muslim communities in California for the lasting positive impact they've had, they have made towards the advancement of our. of our city and country.
Hello, esteemed Mayor Lopez and council members. I'm Musa with Care, the Council on American Islamic Relations, and it is wonderful to see you all. We want to thank you for recognizing American Muslim and Appreciation Month in line with the new state designation of April. This proclamation is especially meaningful as our Muslim and Arab communities have faced an unprecedented and unrelenting wave of Islamophobia and discrimination in the last 18 months. In 2024, care offices nationwide received the highest number of anti-Muslim hate complaints in our 30-year history. It is important to understand that the efforts to suppress support for Palestinian rights has directly contributed to the proliferation of anti-Muslim, anti-Arab, and anti-Palestinian hate crimes. Today's proclamation is an important step in humanizing and acknowledging the pain and concerns within our communities. We thank you for recognizing the Albany Muslim community, especially in a time where our communities are facing historic levels of violence and discrimination and suppression. We look forward to continuing, to continuing working with you to ensure a just, diverse, and equitable Albany for everyone. Thank you so much.
Thank you again, Councilmember Mickey, for reading proclamation. Also, just want to note, we provided this proclamation this meeting in May because we had to cancel our last meeting in April. Moving on to our next proclamation, Affordable Housing Month, which will be read by Councilmember Jordan and received by Susan Friedland, Susan Friedland, CEO of SAHA Housing.
In recognition of Affordable Housing Month, which is this May, this month we're in, whereas quality affordable homes are vital to health, healthy, safe, and racially just communities. And whereas, after 41 years, East Bay housing organizations proudly continues to champion affordable housing in the East Bay, fostering a racially and economically just community for all. And whereas, even before current high inflation rates, increasing housing costs led longtime residents to be displaced, live in overcrowded homes, or experience homelessness, threatening our region's racial diversity and economic opportunity. And whereas, stable affordable homes are the solution to homelessness, and support seniors, families, youth, veterans, and people with disabilities or special needs, and our whole community. And whereas, there are concerted efforts underway to drastically reduce or altogether eliminate federal funding support for affordable housing. And whereas, these efforts have already led to the cancellation of more than half the grants funding fair housing initiative programs, and the cancellation of at least $62 million in Section 4 funding administering technical assistance and small grants across the country. And whereas, proposed budgets for National Department of Housing and Urban Development threaten to send shockwaves through existing housing voucher, public housing, and homelessness assistance programs, leaving communities without critical support. And whereas, the role of local governments and regional bodies has never been so critical in maintaining support for producing, preserving, and protecting affordable housing opportunities for low-income communities. And whereas, local housing organizations are continuing to recognize May as Bay Area Affordable Housing Month because regional action to a growing regional housing crisis is an essential part of recovery from the pandemic and the work to ensure that everyone has an affordable and stable home. And whereas, the East Bay Housing Organizations has organized Affordable Housing Week for 29 years, acknowledging the need for and benefits of affordable homes. Now, therefore, the Albany City Council hereby proclaims May as Affordable Housing Month in the City of Albany, and that the city will work to support affordable and stable housing at the local, regional, state, and federal levels. And it's my pleasure to welcome, I believe you're the Executive Director of SAHA? Is that, do I have that right?
Yeah, I'm the CEO.
CEO, which is responsible for building the Verona Hills project, if I have that right.
Yes, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, say a couple words.
Thanks too.
Thanks, everyone. Lovely to see you tonight. And just for your information, it's a really great month. If you're interested in affordable housing, how it works, what it looks like, what policies are, and we have a month-long, great schedule of events, East Bay Housing Organization, that's ebho.org/events, and they're all open to the public. I'm Susan Friedland. I'm the CEO of Satellite Affordable Housing Associates, we're a nonprofit affordable housing developer that built that pretty purple building that you see on the corner of Washington and Cleveland. And we'll be hosting our own celebratory event, probably in a month or two, when everyone's all settled in, and we welcome everyone to come check it out. We also have a project that has a grand opening tomorrow in Pinole at 8/11 San Pablo. It's housing for veterans, so you're welcome to come to that as well. I'm really proud to be here tonight because I'm also an Albany resident for many years, and I sat here on the Planning and Zoning Commission. My kids went to Albany schools, and I was, I ran the Albany Music Fund, so it's really wonderful to be part of a community that supports affordable housing the way this community does. So I just want to commend this community, the staff, the elected officials, current and past, who put their words into action by supporting Verona Hill and creating affordable housing here in Albany. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jordan. Next, we will have Vice Mayor McQuaid read Proclamation for National Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day, which shall be received by Sergeant Holly Matthews.
City, City of Albany proclamation. In recognition of National Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day, May 11 through 17, 2025, and May 15, 2025. Whereas, in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15 as National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the calendar week in which May 15 falls as National Police Week. Established by Joint Resolution of Congress in 1962, National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. And whereas, members of the Albany Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of our community members, and the men and women of the Albany Police Department continuously provide a vital public service. And whereas, over 1,400 law enforcement officers in the state of California have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. And whereas, it is important that all members of our community know and understand the duties, responsibilities, sacrifices, and hazards facing the more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Albany Police Department, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas, Albany police officers are committed to the highest professional standards and working in partnership with our community to meet the challenges of reducing crime, creating a safe and welcoming environment, and improving the quality of life for our community and those who visit. And whereas, the City of Albany is proud of our police officers and wishes to recognize their commitment to the public safety profession, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Albany City Council hereby recognizes the week of May 11, 2025, through May 17, 2025, as Police Memorial Week, and calls upon all community members, civic, and educational organizations to join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered dedicated service to their communities. And be it further proclaimed that the Albany City Council hereby recognizes May 15, 2025, as Peace Officer Memorial Day, and we call upon the community of Albany to observe this day in honor of those law enforcement officials, officers, who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community, or have become disabled in the performance of their duty. And let us recognize and pay respects to the survivors of the fallen.
Thank you, Mayor Lopez. Thank you, Peggy. And the rest of the council for recognizing and supporting National Police Week and Police Officers Memorial Day. This is an important week for law enforcement as it serves as a reminder to all of us about the sacrifices police officers make each day as we serve our communities. We are honored to serve this city and thank the community for their support. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Vice Mayor McQuaid, and thank you Sergeant Harley, Holly Matthews for being in attendance with us today. Off to work. Next, we will have a proclamation for Public Service Recognition Week to be read by Councilmember Hansa Romero.
Hello, everybody. And I don't believe we have anybody receiving this award, or proclamation, I should say. In honor of Public Service Recognition Week, May 4 through 10, 2025. Whereas, Public Service Recognition Week is celebrated the first full week in May nationwide to honor those who serve our nation as federal, state, county, and local government employees. And whereas, our community is served every day by City of Albany employees, including the city's administration, city clerk, community development, finance, fire, human resources, police, public works, and recreation and community services departments. And whereas, the public servants of the City of Albany have demonstrated commitment and dedication as evident in the daily interactions and services provided to our community, ranging widely from public safety and emergency response, maintenance and construction, park and environmental stewardship, community services, events, and recreation, planning, permitting, and associated support services. And whereas, City of Albany employees and people and members of our community that bring their own individual uniqueness, expertise, and life experiences to our city. And whereas, the City of Albany currently includes 111 full-time employees and 37 part-time employees working together to serve our community. And whereas, as included in the City of Albany's core values displayed in city facilities, we are here for the community, act inclusively, providing quality services for all, take pride in our work, and go the extra square mile, are innovative and take initiative, do the right thing every time with integrity, honesty, and loyalty. Now therefore, the City of Albany, the Albany City Council does hereby proclaim the week of May 4 through 10, 2025, as Public Service Recognition Week in the City of Albany, and express gratitude to the City of Albany employees for their dedicated public service. 111 full-time people. I mean, I know some cities that, that's one department. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hansa Romero. And it looks like by proxy, City Clerk Anne has received it. The unsung heroes of our, of our city, but also meant much, much appreciation to our city staff, who both are here tonight and not here with us tonight, who do phenomenal job in ensuring the functionality of our community. Unless anyone else has anything to share among any of these proclamations, we will move it right along. I know we got quite the evening ahead of us. We'll move on to item number five, City Manager's Report. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Update for the council, understanding that you have much more on your agenda this evening. As noted, actually, in one of the proclamations, we are continuing to learn new inventions for, at the federal government level in terms of potential cuts in funding, either at the state, or county, or potentially our local government level. A lot more to unpack on that, and we'll certainly be following up once we have substantive idea of the magnitude of those cuts and what programs may be facing impacts. Again, it's rapidly changing as well, so it's hard to totally predict. Again, we will, we are actively monitoring this and will provide regular updates. Want to flag an important event coming up. It is a mini expo, if you will, of the Planning Department, of my colleagues here at the Dais, on Tuesday, May 20, from 5:30 to 7:30. It's drop-in anytime through that timeframe at our community center. There are three plans will be under discussion, one of which is the Active Transportation Plan. The council has seen that to some extent, primarily focused on improving routes for both bicyclists and pedestrians throughout the city. Also, our Street Tree Management Plan, and how we maintain and improve our urban forests going forward, and the resources therein. Additionally, our Watershed Management Plan, which is really analyzing water flows throughout our city and how to improve low drainage and associated issues that we may experience with increased storms or unpredictable weather. Some other events coming up very soon, please save the date. Our annual movie in the park at Memorial Park will be held Saturday, May 10, sunset to about 10 PM. The feature this evening will, of the movie will be Mamma Mia. It should be a fun opportunity for all members of our community to get out and enjoy a movie together, and hopefully the weather behaves. A reminder that we hold parcel tax exemption and rent or rebate application assistance at the senior center. This will be held Thursday, May 15, from 1:30 to 4:30. And this is one-on-one assistance with individuals looking to get guidance on how to fill out those applications, the parcel taxes that may be applicable, and how to see that process move forward. So please take advantage of that opportunity. We can also work with individuals on off-hours outside of this event as well, so please reach out. Sidewalk shaving program is underway. Maintenance of Zone 5 was completed in April. You'll see those are fascinating divots that even out the sidewalk throughout our network of sidewalks in the city. Appreciation to Public Works Department for their innovation in retaining this service. A total of 2,182 sidewalk hazards were addressed during this maintenance cycle, so that is a significant accomplishment. It helps us extend the usable life before actual rehab of the sidewalk is needed. Appreciation to our council members, Mayor and Vice Mayor, for attending our Dog Park Grand Reopening Celebration. Interesting event with primarily the audience being dogs, but most were well-behaved, and dog treats were provided to all. So really appreciate the time and effort that went into that event and leading up to that event with regard to what you've heard a bit of tonight with the Prop 68 funding that has allowed our staff to do some very thoughtful enhancements to each of our parks on a, on a timeline. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Do we have any questions from City Council?
I have a question. The content that we presented on the Active Transportation Plan at the expo, will there be new, new content, or is it primarily what has already been presented to various bodies?
It'll be the next phase that will focus on future networks, both pedestrian and bicycle networks, and policies and programs associated with that.
Will it be set up interactive to get feedback? I mean, I presume you're gonna get feedback, but is there like a structured feedback element to it?
Yes, there will be. Yes. There will be feedback solicited at the event and an online version for folks that aren't able to attend.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions or comments online? Oh, sorry Peggy.
I just wanted to say I got my postcard today about the expo and low-income tax workshops, and I just want to thank you, and especially thank you that 94707 now gets it. For many years, we were not in the loop, but excited to get it.
We love inclusivity.
Go ahead.
Yes, I just have a question of our City Manager. It was indicated in her report that concerning the loss of federal funding, which is in flux, how will that be communicated to the public? How will we know if there is a loss of funding of projects or of staff? I know there was some discussion about, a few meetings back, about the decarbonization of the block with Department of Energy funding. But other than that, I mean, I know a lot of, there's been a lot of loss of funding that's expected. How will we be informed about that? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Mayor, thank you for the question. I think as evident by my statement tonight, it will be verbalized here with our City Council meetings. Should we have confirmed cuts, meaning not loose threats, but actual tangible cuts, that will certainly be conveyed to the community via our website, our e-news, and any other medium that may be appropriate. And again, I don't have a clear concise response because it really depends on what the project program or service is, and who is most directly impacted. So the communication will have multiple channels depending on the nature of the impacts. More to come, for sure.
Thank you, City Manager. And did that conclude any comment? Thank you. All right, moving on to item number six, Good of the City. This is for attendees to provide the council comments, information, and questions that are not on the agenda. If you are online, you may raise your hand now, and I'll turn it to City Clerk.
I believe we have someone in the room, too.
My name is Peter Goodman. I'm a longtime Albany resident and past member of both the Library Board and the Albany Arts Committee. I'm here today to let the council and the city know that a group of us are in the beginning stages of creating an Albany-focused, hyper-local news site. Currently, we live in a media desert. The number of local news media has shrunk in recent years, and those that remain, and I'm thinking particularly of the San Francisco Chronicle, East Bay Times, they pay very little attention to Albany. Albany news in their pages or on TV tends to be of the sensationalist type. Long-form reporting on substantive issues is almost entirely absent. There are local bloggers and substackers and social media posters who actually do cover a broad range of events, but overall, these are haphazard, selective, and opinionated. What is missing is unbiased and professional coverage of the events and issues that matter on a daily basis to the citizens of Albany. We want to create a platform for such coverage. Areas of interest include government, public safety, commercial and residential development, schools, recreation and sports, transportation, and the community at large, with advertising opportunities for local businesses and other organizations. There are many existing models for hyper-local news sites. For example, there's the Emeryville Eye, LocalNewsMatters.org through Bay City News, Piedmont, et cetera, and Emily Regusso's Berkeley Scanner. Berkeley Side, Oakland Side, and now Richmond Side are an example of a large and well-funded operation. But by definition, none of these hyper-local sites provide Albany coverage because Albany is not local to them. So we have to create our own. As one among several first steps, we've launched an Albany news survey entitled, "Help Us Bring Local News Back to Albany." It's been posted around now on various social media sites, so please look for it. I'm afraid the URL is too long to share here. We really want everyone's input. If anyone is on Facebook, you can check out News for Albany CA Group, which has a post that links to the survey. Right now, we're just figuring out what form the site is gonna take, how it's gonna be administered, who will do the reporting and editing, how we can guarantee credibility and professionalism, and most importantly, financing and community support. We envision this as a community service, and are hoping to get many people from the community involved, as not just readers, but active supporters and participants. Please look forward to further developments as our plans solidify. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment.
Mr. Alpert?
I'm Dr. Stephen Alpert. I'm here yet again to request the council to justify why Albany follows only the minimum state mandate of notifying those within 300 feet of new construction, regardless of project size, when in fact, for years, other California cities have used wider and varied notification to distinguish between small and large-scale projects. Three city officials sitting right here, Community Development Director Bond, City Attorney Super Marion, and Councilman Jordan initially refused to respond, and then outright lied, and for months engaged in obfuscation as to why Albany could not expand beyond the minimum state mandate. These false assertions were viewed in detail during the April 7th council meeting, and meticulously documented in forwarded emails. The practice of only notifying those within 300 feet clearly limits public discourse, allowing the Planning and Zoning Commission to propose, and the council then pushed through new projects, no matter how inappropriate, with minimal awareness and input from the public. Such was the case for the oversized, five-story modern box proposed for 1600 Solano Avenue. Only 73 properties were alerted by postcards mailed 10 days prior to the first planning and zoning hearing. By approving the plans of this project as submitted, the council violated every aspect of Albany's planning and zoning mission statement, which reads, "The purpose of design review is to ensure that designs of projects are visually and functionally appropriate to their site and harmonious with their surroundings." Clearly, the plans for 1600 Solano are not visually and functionally appropriate or harmonious with the adjacent Craftsman-era buildings. Why post a mission statement if the Planning and Zoning Commission, which you appointed, and this council will refuse, simply ignore it? Denzil Bonus was cited as the reason the plans for 1600 Solano had to be approved as submitted, and obligated the city to greenlight a five-story structure with no setback and no parking. At the very least, the Planning and Zoning Commission and this council should have insisted that the building incorporate Craftsman features to be compatible with the neighborhood. 300-feet notice is reasonable for minor additions to private homes, but inappropriate for large, multi-story projects. Other California municipalities use 1,000-feet notice for larger projects. If the council genuinely believes that alerting only those within 300 feet is appropriate for large, multi-story projects, which will impact all of Albany, then defend this practice. Submit 300-feet notification as a, for, as an agenda item for, to allow for in-depth, extended public discussion. For reasons unknown, the council to date has refused to do so. I will continue to review the lies used by this council by select city officials to avoid addressing 300-foot notification. Celeste will continue.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Celeste Barks. For almost a year, the council has declined to submit 300-foot notification as a formal agenda item. It raises several questions. What motivated city officials to outright lie as to why Albany could not expand notification beyond the minimum state mandate? Whose interests are being served by refusing to discuss this issue? They're certainly not those of your constituents. Forty-three individuals voiced legitimate concerns about the 1600 Solano during the single council meeting devoted to the subject, the project. And then Vice Mayor Tiedemann commented on the intensity of feelings in the forwarded email. Then Councilman McQuade correctly called the project disappointing and requested continuance, whereas presiding Mayor Jordan moved for immediate approval. Of note, current council members Lopez, Mickey, and Hanson Romero were not on the council in '22. Subsequently, more than a dozen individuals have requested wider notification for large-scale projects, perplexed by the council's unjustified adherence to minimum public notice for such projects. Last if not least, why has the council steadfastly refused to address the issue of 300-foot notification? Your constituents deserve answers to those questions. Until the council submits 300-foot notification as an agenda item, Stephen and I will continue to highlight this issue as the council refuses to discuss it. Albany deserves better.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Faruza Sabir, and I'm a senior at Albany High School, as well as the president of the Tobacco Use Prevention and Education Program at the high school. And we wanted to inquire about the subcommittee that was formed last year in June to work on stopping the sale of tobacco in Albany. We understand that you guys are very busy and have a lot of things to do, but we haven't heard anything about the subcommittee since it was formed, even after multiple of our members gave public comments. All of our members are very passionate on this topic. In fact, just this school year, we've done presentations to fifth-grade classes at Oceanview and Marin. We presented to the PTA at Oceanview, the PTSA, and the faculty at the high school, as well as holding booths throughout the year during break and presenting in classes for our peers. We've also been working to hang up door hangers throughout Albany, letting its residents know what we're trying to achieve, and information they need, and how they can help. We've been trying hard to push this out and get more people to acknowledge our work and mission, especially after Albany's Measure V was approved and voted for by 64% of Albany voters, allowing 16- and 17-year-olds to vote in municipal and school board elections. Majority of people wanted our voices and opinions to be heard, but that's hard for us if we're not given a place to express ourselves. I look forward to hearing from you guys on the subcommittee. Thank you so much, and have a great night.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, I'm Amy Smolins with Albany Strollers &amp; Rollers. First, I just wanted to say thank Peter Goodman for his efforts to bring news to Albany. Since those brief glory days of Emily Regusso's patch, we've really lived in a news desert here, so I and others I know, my neighbors, really support your effort, so thank you, Peter. I wanted to announce that our organization, Albany Strollers &amp; Rollers, a nonprofit community group, has funded six new bike, bike racks, and three more public pumps that are around town that are in the ground already. Businesses sponsoring these racks at their locations are Best Friends Wine Bar on Solano and San Pablo, Strictly Vinyl Records on Solano, and East Bay Paint Center on San Pablo. And there are three other racks that we funded on Solano and San Pablo. The three new public pumps are at the Olone Greenway Plaza, the waterfront near the Bike Link Lockers, and Memorial Park by the pool. And the pumps work not only for bikes, but for scooters and strollers or anything else, any other kind of tire that holds air. Like to thank Grizzly Peak Cyclists. We apply for annual grants and get grants most of those years, and that helps us fund these. Also want to really thank city staff Ben Matlaw. We worked with him closely to refine the locations and ensure that Public Works installed them really quickly after they arrived. So I hope you on council and the public in the room and online here will use the 80-bike bike racks and five public pumps in our one-square-mile town. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
I would start out by also thanking Peter Goodman and the group that he's working with. I love the idea of having more local news. I think it's something we really need in Albany. I'm calling in tonight because I, we, a few days ago, we got our Waste Management bill, and it went from, it more than doubled in price, more than 100% increase. It was, it was 85.68, and it went up to $177.51, increase of $91.53. I'm trying to understand exactly what, what happened, what the increase was about. I called Waste Management, and I said that I'd gotten something about a 3.66% increase, but that didn't seem to be what was happening, since this was more than 100%. I also asked the person who answered the phone at Waste Management if she was getting a lot of calls like mine, and she said yes, almost all the calls are like mine. And so I'm wondering, A, I guess, why the city didn't let us know that this, these prices were gonna double, more than double? And also, I'm trying to understand, I mean, I know it's been explained, Jeff Bonds in an email explaining that they've gotten rid of the 10-gallon garbage, and it's now up to the, we don't have a choice, even if we don't have 10 gallons of gallon, of garbage, we have to have the 20-gallon one. And, but I'm having trouble believing that that is the full, the full reason, that it's because we have the exact same thing, only they're, the exact same container, the 20-gallon one, but now they're charging us more for it. I'm not sure. I looked to see what other cities were paying, and it looks to me like Castro Valley is paying less, for people in Castro Valley paying less for their 20-gallon ones. So I don't know if this is part of a negotiation. I know that we don't have a lot of options in Albany in terms of who provides our, our pickup, our trash, and our garbage, and our recycling. But I think that the city should look out for us, and also keep us informed. It's just not okay, and I, anyway, that's why I'm calling. I'd like, I'd like a better explanation, and I would also like the city to be better about letting people know, and so we're not taken by surprise the way that apparently a lot of people, the women have been. The woman at Waste Management was very sympathetic, and it was, yeah, sorry to see this happening, and I would like it to not ever happen again in Albany. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Yes, hi, it's Dave Dambie here, and I just wanted to follow up on what Julie was saying. I found the way that Waste Management handled this rate increase surprising, and I expect there probably are quite a few people in Albany that are getting it like today and, over the weekend, so you may be hearing a lot more about this. I am not sure exactly how Waste Management operates. I've had to deal with them in the past on several issues, and they don't seem very well organized. So I'm just concerned about the users of it here in Albany. I know somebody can get a senior discount if they sign up with PG&E's care program, and then let Waste Management know about that. Would be nice if Albany could work with Waste Management to have some system in place so that the seniors in Albany could be getting lower rates and just deal through the city or directly with Waste Management. One other thing that I happened to see just by chance, walking yesterday, I've not seen 20-gallon bins, the blue ones and the green ones, ever, but I did see two new ones on a street here in, in Albany, and wondered if that would not be, you know, a cheaper alternative for some people that don't want the, the very large ones. So I feel like there should be some more discussion on this, better ways to be more efficient about it, and supportive of the citizens. Thanks very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you for your comment.
This is Lucinda Young. I have a couple of comments. I first want to express my support for the previous high school student, and I'm sorry, I've forgotten her name, who spoke on behalf of an Albany high school group, who is inquiring on the status of the subcommittee that was, I recall, was formed a few months ago, sometime last year, to look into a, the sale of, to balance- last year, to look into a, the sale of, of tobacco in Albany. And I would encourage a status report on that, or if nothing has happened on it, that, that be explored further. I understand there are at least two other cities in the state who have banned tobacco sales. And second, on the Waste Management issue, I first want to say I, I've been, I think we're very, very fortunate to have Waste Management as our hauler. So many places in the country have no curbside recycling, and we're one of the few states that has any curbside composting, so I feel really grateful that we have that. I do have some concerns about this latest price adjustment, eliminating the 10-pound or 10-gallon containers. Part of our Albany Climate Action and Adaptation Plan encourages waste reduction, and this is, City Sustainability Department and Waste Management have had at least two public workshops in the last few years, which are all about encouraging our residents to reduce waste as part of our responsible climate action. I had a 10-pound, 10-gallon container, and most, most weeks I may use at most half of that. And that's not by accident, that's because I really make a practice of reducing waste to lower my carbon footprint. And my invoice has got, has gone up double, and I'm paying now for a 20-gallon container, even though I'm using a fraction of it. So my, my concern is that this adjustment has really reduced some of the incentive, definitely the financial incentive, to reduce waste. And thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you very much. Pointing to city staff, because I know there were several inquiries around Waste Management Bill and perhaps opportunity to also highlight artwork with a previous consultant.
One of the public speakers did mention about the care program, and that is available to Waste Management customers, so if you qualify for the PG&E care program, the documentation of essentially your bill, PG&E bill can be sent to Waste Management, and there'll be a 25% reduction of the Waste Management Bill. And that, that's for any customer, regardless of age of the household. With respect to the explanation of the, the big change in the city's rates, we do have a webpage on, under Community Development and Solid Waste. You will find an explanation of the, the variety of reasons that we did experience a significant rate increase here in Albany.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Jordan?
Yeah, if I could just add that, from my perspective as a council member, one of the biggest things that changed was China stopped taking recyclable material from the United States, along with a lot of other countries, and that's because it wasn't actually recyclable, and that increased the cost of recycling considerably. And so I would ask that people view their waste collection as a package of recyclable collection, waste collection, and green waste collection, and that component went up dramatically.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our Good of the City. Moving on to consent calendar, items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine, but the city council will be enacted by one motion. By approval of the consent calendars, staff recommendations will be adopted unless otherwise modified by the city council. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or member of the audience requests removal of the item from the consent calendar. Do any members on council wish to pull an item?
Item 7-5, please.
Any other item? Do any members of the public wish to pull an item? All right, Vice Mayor McQuaid, item 7-5.
Thank you, I would just request we vote on this particular item separately. I'll give my reasons. I don't, as I said at the last council meeting, I don't think this is the highest and best use of our remaining APRA funds. We're really in an unstable financial time right now, and it's impacting our most vulnerable residents very much. I want to make sure that we don't spend our money too hastily, that we keep it in case we need it for them. Last, last time, or in 2024, the indirect costs were at least $84,000, and it'll increase this year, and that just seems like a really large investment for us, plus the $40,000. So I'd like to vote on this separately.
Any other comment from members of the council?
May I make a motion?
I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve consent excluding 7-5.
Second.
City Clerk?
Councilmember McKee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McQuaid?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yep.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I will move approval of item 7-5.
Looking for a second?
A second.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Mickey?
No.
Vice Mayor McQuaid?
No.
Mayor Lopez?
Yep.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you, City Council. Moving on to item number eight, mid-year budget review.
Yeah, we're at 10.
Yeah, my bad, that was copy and paste from a previous. Yeah, sorry. Moving on to item number 10, unfinished business, active transportation plan network parking analysis for potential bicycle facilities on Solano Ave. City staff.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Justin Fried, Transportation and Sustainability Manager. So in February, with the presentation of the Active Transportation Plan Draft Goals and Existing Conditions Analysis, staff sought direction on desired analysis before bringing back a discussion of policy direction on Solano Avenue for development of the Active Transportation Plan Future Network. At that meeting, council directed staff to prepare an analysis of parking impacts of two alternatives of cycling facilities on Solano Avenue and a rough order of magnitude cost estimate. Little bit of background, Solano Avenue utilizes a relatively narrow right-of-way for many functions. It's therefore a challenging task, how best to accommodate a range of modes. East of San Pablo Avenue, it's a designated truck route in Albany and Berkeley. It has AC Transit Local Line 18 and Transbay Line G service, and it's a Main Street retail corridor with significant pedestrian use. Solano Ave also has different distinct segments in terms of existing infrastructure, function, and jurisdiction. The area in gray needs, was referenced earlier in your, in the study session, needs shorter-term upgraded curb ramps, sidewalk, and pavement repair. The area identified in red between San Pablo and Masonic has upgraded lighting furnishing and curb extensions from the late 90s, early 2000s, as well as received upgraded curb ramps more recently. East of Tulare is Berkeley jurisdiction, and then there's west of San Pablo Avenue, two additional blocks of commercial district with upgraded curb ramps, and then residential and steep grades as you go west of there. In 2012, the Active Transportation Plan did, did not include bicycle facilities on Solano Ave, and it identified facilities that were slow bikeways proposed on Washington Avenue and Dartmouth Avenue, and faster bikeways on Marin Avenue and Brighton Avenue. Since 2012, there's been a significant focus in the planning field on facility designs for busier corridors to provide safer cycling access closer to destinations. During the development of the Solano Ave Complete Street Study in 2018 and 2019, the consultants prepared a memorandum discussing a range of options for cycling facilities on Solano Ave, and that was attached to the staff report for additional background. Given the roadway characteristics of Solano Ave, particularly high motor vehicle volumes and high curbside activity, separated bikeways or cycle tracks are the principal facility type considered to provide a higher comfort bicycle facility. Even with separated bikeways, frequent unsignaled intersection crossings, short blocks in the east-west direction, and pedestrian loading activity may continue to limit the range of users that are comfortable cycling on Solano Ave. So in February, council requested parking analysis of two alternatives. The first alternative features a separated bikeway in the uphill eastbound direction between angled parking and the sidewalk. In the downhill westbound direction, there's parallel parking, and cyclists would share the narrowed vehicle lane with motorists. This provides different levels of cycling comfort, parking capacity, and driving facilities in the uphill and downhill directions. Alternative two provides separated bikeways in both directions between parking and the sidewalk. With parallel parking in both directions, both vehicle travel lanes are narrowed. This alternative provides uniform cycling comfort, parking capacity, and driving facilities in both directions, but with a more significant change to on-street parking for motor vehicles. The two concepts were circulated internally among city staff for initial review and feedback, sharing some of this initial feedback for council consideration, with the caveat that this is a concept that was developed to provide the parking analysis requested, and it's not a proposed design. The fire department routinely, routinely uses both an ambulance and truck one to respond to service calls, including on Solano Ave. Truck one requires 15 feet of clearance when stopped to access equipment on both sides of the vehicle. Under the current layout and practice, the vehicle blocks the lane on one side of the street. With 15 feet of width on the other side, traffic is generally able to proceed slowly in both directions around the vehicle. If the call is expected to be for a longer duration, the police department is sometimes asked to provide traffic control. Based upon calls for service data for the past three years, average annual response duration for calls on Solano Ave from San Pablo to Tulare is around 60 hours, and for the segment Masonic to Tulare, around 43 hours of that. In alternative one, the combined travel lane width is reduced to approximately 26 feet. With the fire engine width needs, this would restrict Solano traffic more clearly to one direction while out on a call. This may require more regular police department traffic control requests when there are service calls on Solano Ave. In alternative two, the combined travel lane width is reduced to 22 feet. With the fire engine needs, the fire department would likely block traffic in both directions while on a call on Solano Ave and require police department traffic control when service calls are made on Solano. The staff report also identifies other operational and functional considerations for Solano Ave that would need to be analyzed further. Additional design, programming, or curb management changes may need to be recommended as part of advancing a potential design. These considerations include reviewing AC Transit station design and operational considerations, loading, delivery, and truck route needs, parklet and bus stop location, bus stop parklet locations, minimizing bicycle pedestrian conflicts, and compliance with one-way facility, and implications for special events. So in order to better understand the roadway safety and engineering issues, Parametrics was asked to develop the two alternative concepts for a representative city block. This was deemed necessary to provide parking estimates due to the intersection constraints informing the available curb space for vehicle parking. Again, this is not a design proposal. The concept was evaluated with an eye toward the intersection constraints, and two in particular, turning movements and visibility. And this concept analysis is provided as an attachment in the agenda packet, and Andrew Lee with Parametrics is here tonight if there are technical questions on this. Turning movements shown here for one of the intersections were drawn for both fire department ladder truck and passenger vehicles. And in addition, the site stopping distance at the intersections for vehicles traveling 20 miles per hour along San Pablo Ave was also reviewed. And in particular, shown here for alternative one on the left, this assumed a second staging location for side-street vehicle approaches after stopping at the crosswalk, consistent with general practice to move, proceed forward to improve visibility before actually entering the intersection. The one-block concept for alternative one is shown here in full. The parking analysis shows one fewer vehicle parking spaces for this alternative, representing a 4% reduction. And this is the full-block concept for alternative two. The parking analysis shows nine fewer spaces under alternative two, 33% reduction. And again, this is showing for one block. Different blocks have some different geometries and constraints, but this has driveways, has a signalized intersection, unsignaled intersection, and gives a rough order of magnitude of the, the change in parking expected. Also asked to prepare a rough order of magnitude cost estimate, which was done for a streetscape project for the Solano Ave from Masonic to Tulare. Includes improvements to the roadway and sidewalks, as well as lighting and drainage. If the streetscape largely keeps features in their current alignment, the construction estimate is $30 million. If it entails changing alignment for curbs on one or both sides of the street and the related complexity that that entails, the estimate would move up towards the $50 million. Again, this is roughly based on the design elements and rough quantities. It's not particular to a specific concept alternative. Designs would need to be developed in greater detail before more specific cost estimates could be provided. So this came up a little bit earlier. Engagement for Phase Two of development of the Active Transportation Plan is getting underway with a public workshop scheduled for May 20th at the community center. Council direction tonight will help the project team scope the work for Phase Two and the future Active Transportation Network discussion, as well as the path forward for Solano Ave streetscape improvements longer term. So if the council directs staff to continue setting the potential for dedicated cycling facilities on Solano Ave in the Active Transportation Plan, staff will incorporate this discussion into upcoming public engagement on the future of the network. Identifying project priorities will then be the focus of the third round of development of the plan. The final decision on incorporation of Solano Ave into the bike network would be part of the adoption of the final plan. If the council directs staff not to include dedicated cycling facilities on Solano Ave, staff will conduct the upcoming public engagement and analysis focused on alternative network routes. Solano Ave would remain part of the discussion for the priority pedestrian network, as well as for locations where the priority cycling network crosses Solano Ave. And again, it was discussed a little bit in your earlier study session, but independent of this direction, staff will continue to develop plans for accessible curb ramps and pavement repair for Solano Ave between Masonic and Tulare under a nearer-term capital improvement project to meet obligations to upgrade accessibility along the corridor. And with that, thank you, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for your presentation. Do we have any questions from city council?
Staff, thank you for the presentation. So you mentioned that staff is going to continue moving forward with curb ramp improvements, recognizing that policy hasn't been, direction hasn't been set on cycling facilities. Is there, given that we have a cost estimate of $30 to $50 million, depending on whether or not we move the curb, is there a cost estimate just for, just, just the curb work that you all are thinking about now? Is, is there a ballpark number that you all know? Is there a ballpark number that you all know?
Hi, I can speak to that just a little bit. We have a ballpark number, we're seeing about a million and a half, but that does not include, that is purely curb ramps, does not include any patch paving, any safety enhancements, any lighting enhancements that we've also talked about, purely just for the curb ramps in place, same alignment.
Before you leave, just, and that $1.5 million, were we to spend that and just do the curbs, would that meet the obligations under the ADA agreement?
It's my understanding that it would.
Sorry, that was my only question.
Only one? Councilmember Jordan, you have any question?
No.
No.
All right.
Wait, someone write that down. On this day.
This day deserves a proclamation.
Put it on my tombstone.
I have a question, but I'll defer to Councilmember Hans Romero.
Oh, you can go ahead. I feel like I've fallen into an alternative universe precedent. So, with alternate two, with the bike paths on both sides of the street, you mentioned there may be impacts to the parklets. Is there even a thought the parklets would remain?
Use of the parking lane would potentially have same variety of options as it does today, so parklets with, there are parklets that exist across cycle tracks or bikeways in parallel parking lanes in other jurisdictions, so council could entertain that being, continue to be a programming option for Solano under that configuration. It would involve either the cycle, the bike lane being between the parklet and the sidewalk zone, so it would involve more crossing between, across the cycle track, or other jurisdictions have. If it was all street level, you could also choose to just go, bring the bike lane on the inside adjacent to the travel lane around the parklet. That's been another permutation of that in some jurisdictions.
Do all the intersections have the same turning radius and constraints? Like, I understand you studied basically one or two intersections, which was what we directed you to do, but I'm curious if they're all the same.
No, they're not all the same. Most of the residential street approaches are similar width. There's some slight differences in geometry or in distance between offset intersection approaches on Solano Avenue, so the numbers would likely vary block to block, but for the sake of speed and efficient use of resources, we brought one block to you for consideration.
That's fine. So, Chief Boydo, I have a few questions for you. Thank you for being here tonight. Can you talk a little bit more about the impact on the fire department as far as service, your ability to maneuver through the city?
Yes, good evening, Chief Boydo, Fire Chief. Right now, we have a fairly good example of what we're doing, what we could be dealing with on Lower Solano, with the current conditions that were put in, installed about 20 years ago or so. Everything has gotten wider, fire engine-wise, and then getting longer with our new area that'll be here in four years. While there are some technological advantages to, that we're purchasing and designing in to make our turning radius better, to be able to get around these tight conditions, I'm worried that if we end up with something that's designed as tight as Lower Solano on Upper Solano, that'll impact our response times to not only other parts of the city on the east side when we use Solano as a corridor, but also our operating distance around the fire engine and the fire truck and ambulance when we're on scene. The other impacts that I'm worried about is as, I believe, our housing plan has to go higher on Solano Avenue eventually, we're going to be in that lane of traffic longer. A higher building means more time on scene for us, whether it's going up to deal with a medical aid, a public assist. We're 74% of our calls are medical aids, so 74% of the time, we're going to be at that around 30 minutes. That's just going to go higher, which means that we'll have to utilize, depending on the amount of space, other city departments, i.e. the police department for traffic control to provide for safety of our personnel, but also pedestrians, cyclists, and other motorists on the roadway.
Thank you. So, would all of these impacts be the same for, say, the waste management truck? And this may not be a question for you, but you know trucks.
As a person that's driven larger vehicles, I would assume so. That would be my presumption. And there, regularly, we encounter issues with being delayed just in normal driving, so other motorists and pedestrians and cyclists on Solano when there's deliveries being done on the lower part that's been modified. Also, with commercial debris pickup, they're getting cans from out of the alleys or behind businesses, so they're there longer. So, I would assume that would be the situation, but I don't know about their operations, but larger vehicles, yes, that's, I would assume they're having the same problem.
I hadn't really thought about this, but if there's a garbage truck basically stopped picking up what's in the alley, you can't get around them if the street's more narrow, is that correct?
It becomes very, very difficult. It depends on what we encounter. We've come into situations where there's a delivery being made in the morning for a restaurant or something along those lines. We have AC Transit, that's one of their main routes through the city, so we run into those delays. It generally isn't too long, but as we add a 20-second delay here, and then another 10, another 5, or whatever, as we do the road, the road diet, or the, yeah, road dieting, I think is the term, now we've added a minute to the response. And that can be, that is a big deal with cardiac arrest, strokes, people who, potentially seizures, but, so some of our medical calls, and then definitely with fires. Fires grow exponentially, so, and the numbers that we used to use were based on the traditional old, back when I was a kid, material, so wood, walls, very, very little plastic. Now, everything is hydrocarbons of some type, so the fires are very quick to go from small to a flashover. That's when everything from top to bottom goes. So, now, we're right around, from the time it starts, right around eight minutes tops before it flashes. In an un-sprinklered building, now if it's sprinkled, that's a different story. All of our buildings would be expected, multi-story buildings going up would be expected to be sprinkled, so we do to gain some time, but there have been a few fires that have overwhelmed the sprinkler system, and we worry about those.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Chief, I have some follow-up questions, sorry if I may. Just because you're up. So, today, when you've responded to a fire on Upper Solano, what is the general route that the fire truck takes? General.
Gen, it depends on which, if it's all the way on the upper part, so if we're talking Tulare, or if we're going to head up Marin and then cut over and come through, if it's the, it's the Masonic, Masonic to almost Santa Fe, that's that, it depends, it's unsure if the crew's going to go up Marin and take Masonic, or Santa Fe, or Curtis, or something like that.
All right, thank you.
I have one last question, I think, for Justin. There's a lot of needs, I think, on Solano for just pedestrian improvements, whether it's lighting, or potential sidewalk widening, crosswalk enhancements. Could they all be done excluding the bicycle, any bicycle infrastructure? Could they just be done as sort of a standalone? Am I making sense? So, in other words, if we choose the alternative to not put cycling facilities in, can we still do the other things? Is it easier?
The short-term project that we're recommending advancing in the CIP is just to deal with the curb ramp, so we meet that deadline. I think there's one other project listed that's more lighting-focused, that includes maybe a couple intersections on Solano Avenue. If we're not moving curb lines, there's maybe a easier path forward for some of those that aren't waiting for other design decisions, but most of the other improvements will need policy direction on Solano Avenue before we can really map out the design and funding of those.
Thank you. Any other further questions from council?
I just have a few. So, how much have we spent so far in exploring these items?
I believe we've spent $13,000 under this task for the active transportation plan, developing these alternatives since the, you know, two, three months before we, ago that we got direction to pursue this analysis.
And if we continued to, further looking into these options, how much more budgetary wise and staff time will be utilized on this versus other, other more efficient and effective
We did scope, know that this was going to be a topic of conversation for the active transportation plan, so we do have a certain amount of budget scoped for researching or developing these ideas. We've spent $13,000 of it, there's maybe $11,000 more in that scope, how we've planned it at the beginning of our, developing our budget for the active transportation plan. Beyond that, it would really mean, be a matter of how much attention, desire there is for attention focused on this question versus other project development or corridor development with the active transportation plan. So, I think it will be a question, how much we can develop under the active transportation plan work that we have? Are we, if there's direction to research this, more completely what appetite there is for doing that within the ATP, either with additional resources or at the sacrifice of some other analysis, or how much is carved out as this is, you know, some other active transportation plans have started, corridor for future study kind of thing, so that active transportation plan proceeds, but we know that there's more things that we want to research before bringing a more specific proposal forward.
So, if we choose not to move forward with investigating either one of these two options, we would have, be able to pull that funding back and utilize it for other potential projects, correct?
That's correct. It could go towards other biker pedestrian priority, active transportation plan projects.
Okay, and let me also, so one of the things that I, when I was looking at the Santa Fe to, sorry, what was, what was the next straight up, Santa Fe?
Curtis.
Say Curtis, okay, so, and that's where the Safeway truck usually has to completely come across the street and block traffic for quite some time while they're backing up into the loading dock, correct? And that's probably not the tightest pinch point along that, the section that we're looking at. Just for further clarification, we're just talking about a project that would only address between Masonic and Tulare, but between Masonic and where the Safeway is on the north side of the street, all of those are the Berkeley storefronts. So, we'd also have to coordinate with Berkeley on the project, and I'm just wondering if that total space amount needed for any of those projects, are there pinch points where it doesn't even fit in there? Because I don't want to keep exploring something that logistically can't work.
I think the street right-of-way, including sidewalk right-of-way, is pretty consistently 80 feet. There are definitely going to be, if we're talking changes to sidewalk grade or anything like that, will be a lot of connections to business entrances. Probably the maneuver that is, you currently see the evidence of the design for at the Curtis and Solano intersection for the Safeway truck access is probably a big one that would need specific focus to make sure that they can continue to access that. It's currently an expanded intersection essentially to accommodate that, so something like that would need to continue to, continue to maintain that access. But we would have to investigate as we, you know, proceed, if there's direction to proceed to look at what other specific design issues as you develop a design for the whole corridor.
And because this just doesn't only affect the width, but it affects the height and everything else about the structure of the street. And I noticed we had talked before about Marin and how Marin, the pavement and everything is constructed. What kind of constraints or specialty conditions are we going to need to be aware of with the reconstruction or repaving of Solano?
Solano does have a lot of utilities. It also has been noted that it has a concrete base under the roadway, so changes that might need to lower the roadway if we're changing curb lines might mean we have to pull up that concrete base if we're going down. That's not, it's an asset that helps support the roadway, but probably would be expensive to replace at a different grade. Those are the ones we know about, but there would probably be others that would come up if we develop further design.
And say, for example, going forward and saying that we look into all this stuff and, okay, here we have this plan, how much are we looking to, what's the total cost around something like this, and where does that budgeting even come into effect with us? Do we even have the money?
We don't have any funding identified for the, for the planning beyond what's scoped in the active transportation plan, design, or construction at this point.
And do you have an idea or estimate of what a total project, something like this, would cost?
The cost estimate we have for the construction costs would be 30 to 50 million for Masonic to Tulare, so it would be a secondary question, is that the right parameters if we're talking long-term active transportation plan? Does it also need to extend further along Solano? As I mentioned, there are several distinct segments. There's also a second jurisdiction with jurisdiction over part of the roadway as it goes east of Tulare. That would make their decision separately.
Gotcha, okay, thank you so much.
To, you configure Solano to match section, you know, the section as it changes, bulb out, snowball out, angled parking, between Masonic and San Pablo, to do that between Masonic and Tulare, would that save money? Would that save considerable money relative to, say, alternative one? You still have to extend the, still have to extend the bulb out, still have to do all the ramps and everything else.
Sorry, could you repeat the question?
Yeah, so I guess I'm trying to get at, what is the delta in construction cost due to including cycling facilities versus not? So, if we just wanted to build what was built 20 years ago, Lower Solano, and make Mid-Solano look exactly like that, would there be much cost change relative, say, alternative one or alternative two? I understand of alternative one and two, the cycling facilities on the roadway, so the curb lines aren't changing either way.
That would be future discussion of whether it would be on the roadway or not, so I don't know the answer to that. I think if the curb lines are changing, we are assuming at what the rough cost estimate we got, that it's closer to the 30 million. If the curb lines are changing and the resulting complexity associated with that, it would be closer to 50 million, but we didn't run, as the, as the, these designs evolved, we didn't run iterations on that. We haven't talked about what level of grade the bike facility would be. We haven't We haven't developed a design to answer that question. Thank you.
Thinking about Safeway and also thinking about housing and how we're all interested, I think, in more housing on Solano, higher housing, more density, how does that impact any of this? I mean, I'm thinking, if Safeway were to change their storefront and add housing above, which I think there's a better appetite for now than there was previously, you know, one of the real problems there was getting the trucks in and out. If we narrow the roadway, does that basically preclude any changes to the Safeway area or any other newer developments maybe that are bigger and need more space?
This design was developed just to answer the parking question. It's not a design that we're proposing. Most of the maneuvering for that specific location occurs within the intersection, so presumably there would be some kind of intersection design to respond to that, but it's not something that we've developed for tonight.
If I may, were the Safeway to redevelop in the sense that the building were to be torn down and a new building would be built, what they currently do is typically not allowed. Cities wouldn't allow a new development to come in and do what they're doing. There are, looking back at the three, four, however many iterations, they had many interesting ways in which they were dealing with the truck. I don't think us narrowing the roadway would necessarily preclude them from doing something. It just may make it more complicated to get a truck in.
Not seeing any more further questions. Thank you city staff for handling a litany of inquiries from the DIES. We'll turn it over to public comments on this item.
Is there anyone in the room that would like to speak?
Just me.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
Good evening, council and staff. My name's Ian McLeod. I'm a member of the Planning and zoning commission, speaking on my own behalf. Interesting to hear this discussion. Thank you very much for having it. I really strongly urge you to continue studying all the protected cycle tracks on San Pablo Avenue. I think it's critical that we do this. To not study them, to not include them in future planning would be really absurd and just kind of an abdication of our commitment to our climate action goals. It wouldn't support our housing goals. It would lead to more congestion in the long run on Solano Avenue. I really just want you to continue studying this. I mean, to drop it now would be crazy. Regarding the two options, I strongly support the second with the protected bike lanes on both sides. Treating the street differently on each side, I think it's bad urban design. I think when we get to more housing on Solano Avenue, as has been discussed, if you don't have facilities that support active transportation and alternatives car use, you're going to be adding a bigger burden to Solano Avenue. And that's going to be a crisis at some point if you don't provide alternate facilities. You know, it's very clear. And, you know, it's amazing, Caltrans kind of gets this from their Main Street California. And I'll read it. "Providing comfortable conditions for biking, walking, and taking public transit gives people the freedom to forego a motor vehicle trip when they choose, since many daily trips are two miles or less, creating infrastructure that supports non-motorized options close to homes and main street locations is a powerful mechanism for achieving sustainability and climate-related goals." I think that's the big picture here. It is really the key thing, is how do we move forward in a sustainable manner? And not only that, it makes the street better to have cycling facilities and better pedestrian facilities, and it brings more people to the street. You would lose some parking, that is true, but the customers you lose to that, those fewer spaces for parking, come back on bikes and by foot. Studies for the last decade or more have shown that when dedicated cycling facilities are put in on these commercial streets, that sales tax revenue either increases or stays the same, but more often it increases. Same goes for some employment data. I think council member Mickey knows all about this. So it's not a loss for the business community. It's actually putting protected cycling facilities on both sides of the street, it's actually the better business option and a better environment for the city in the long run. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
Hello, my name is Harry Prine. I am a long-term resident and business owner on Solano Avenue. Established in 1960, we've been here for 65 years and family-owned since 1964. I've seen a lot of changes on Solano and a lot of changes in Albany. It's nice that we want to provide bicycles and lanes for everybody, but the city was established 100 years ago when everything was smaller. Now you're trying to cram everything into a smaller area. It's just not built for that. The business district should have been on Marin Avenue, but it didn't work out that way, where the streets were nice and wide. I own a laundromat, and for somebody to say bicycles are the way to go, I'd like to see you bring your load of laundry in. It ain't going to happen. You did a lot of studies, and I commend you on that, but did you find out how much parking we're going to lose and how much business we're going to lose because of the parking? If there's no parking on Solano Avenue, you're going to impact everybody on the side streets. I'm going to have to fight for a place to park in front of my own house. You're going to, it's, if this was a new city, great, put everything in you can. But it's not. So we're going to have to work within our borders and try to keep the businesses happy also, because if there's no parking for business, for customers to go to our business, they'll just go to the El Cerrito Plaza. And with less customers coming into the restaurants and businesses, there's less tax money. And you already spent $13,000 on this study. Less tax dollars, there's less to do. So don't try to push the customers away and think that bicycles are the way of the future. It's not, because we just have too much to carry. Unless you want Amazon to do all your shopping, and maybe they'll do the waste pickup too, because it's hard to beat Amazon prices. So good luck. I'm not in favor of the bicycle lanes, sorry to say, but yeah, we need parking, and we need it bad, because the parklets, I feel are, their time has come and went. The pandemic is over between, I think it's Solano up between San Pablo and Evelyn, I think we lost 17 parking spots due to parklets, and they're only being used a quarter of the time. Businesses aren't open for breakfast, they're only open for lunch or for dinner or vice versa, and it's not fair for the rest of the paying business owners to lose parking because we don't have a restaurant. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, my name is Catherine. I'm a member of the Albany Chamber of Commerce as well as a member of the Albany Climate Action Coalition, speaking on my behalf, although I am a member of the Climate Action Committee. I'm a supporter of the bike lanes on Solano Avenue, protected bicycle tracks on both sides. As a bicyclist, a walker, and someone with a car, I prefer to be able to bike and walk wherever I can, both for health reasons and for reducing our impact on the climate, because our contribution is number one to our emissions in Albany. If we don't build a structure for people to feel safe bicycling and walking, people won't. That's why we have the number one contribution being competition, really the car problem in Albany. And although people who may be have disabilities, may need parking, we can offer disabled spaces to people who need that with placards, the blue spaces for that, that's fine. I think we want to encourage people to bike and walk, because people buy houses in Albany, they want to come here for the school. They come here also for the walkable, bikeable neighborhoods, which are different than other places. You can go to suburbs to drive around if they want to. So the value of bike lanes, as Ian also agreed with Ian McLeod's points, is that it also supports, you can fit 10 bicycles in the space of one car. It has more customers for local businesses, and not less, actually. If you look at the research from Bike East Bay and City of Portland, Oregon, like he mentioned, you get more tax revenue and more sales from bike users rather than cars because they come more often. That means more sales for businesses, not less. So for these reasons, thanks so much for your support of continuing to study bike lanes protected for bicyclists on both ends of Solano. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Go ahead, Carrie, you have to unmute yourself.
Yes, my name's Lucinda Young. I am a longtime Albany resident, also a member of the Albany Climate Action Coalition. I would like to reiterate the comments of Ian McLeod earlier today, completely support everything that he has said, and I would urge you to support protected bike lanes on Solano. I think excluding protected bike facilities on Solano Avenue would be contrary to our city's climate action adaptation plan and to the well-being of our city. As you probably know, transportation is responsible for about half of our city's greenhouse gas pollution, and the majority of that comes from private cars. At just last month's Climate Action Committee meeting, Michelle Plous presented a report on the progress our city's making with its climate goals. And although the city's doing really well in some areas, not so great on transportation, that is the area that's made the least progress and really needs the most attention. The cap calls for a 20% reduction in vehicles' miles traveled, and we're not on target to reach that. And the committee had talked about, you know, run around various ideas on how to encourage transportation other than private car. They talked about e-bike rebates and some public transit vouchers. But the most important thing to encourage people to get out of their cars and look at alternative transportation methods, one of the most important is safe bicycle infrastructure. No one is going to bicycle unless you can do it safely. Without safe infrastructure, people are going to travel by car, and as Ian very succinctly explained, looking ahead, we're going to end up with even a bigger mess than we currently have. I also just want to point out, providing bicycle access is an equity issue. I recently read that owning and maintaining a car costs something like $1,000 a month, excluding the purchase price of the car. Was really blown away by that. The cost of car insurance alone has skyrocketed, and it's, the average is now around 2,000 to 2,500 per car per year. So a lot of people are really coming to the realization that, you know, they can't afford a car, and they are looking at options for traveling by bicycle and other things besides the private car. And I just, in response to the previous speaker, just want to point out, I take my dry cleaning on my bicycle. Drop it off and pick it up. I do all my shopping. I have pineers on my bike. I do almost all of my shopping on my bicycle. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Yes.
Hi, this is Judy Kerr. I'm a member of the Transportation Commission, but I'm speaking on my own behalf tonight. I'm not speaking for the Commission. I'd just like to echo the comments made by Harry Prine and Clay Larson in writing, Denise Grimshaw, Carly Bennett, Greg Luntz, and others, who point out the fallacy that a bike lane is going to in any way enhance the business district along Solano Avenue. We need a functioning and effective business district. It requires that we have buses, that we have trucks, and that we have vehicles going up and down Solano Avenue. And there is not room for two separate bike lanes, and having a single bike lane in one direction serves no purpose whatsoever. So we need to really be realistic. There are two functioning alternate routes for bikes that are very effective. There's a fast bike route on Marin, and there's a more slow and sustained safe bike route on Washington Avenue. Those are totally effective for bicycle access to the commercial district along Solano Avenue. We cannot fit bicycles onto Solano Avenue, so we need to enhance what is possible on the alternate routes. If we had signage on Marin and signage on Washington that directed people to the businesses that are adjacent to those streets, that would be extremely helpful. Bicyclists seem to need to want to park outside the door of the facility that they're using for business. And pedestrians can't do that. Travelers by transit can't do that. There's no reason that we need to use our street surface for bicycles when they have an alternate route that's adjacent to it. So I'd like to just not let us be deluded by the notion that bicycle access is the only way of the future. People who are driving cars now are not necessarily contributing to the climate action change. There are any number of people who are driving electric vehicles and people who are using smaller scooters and motorcycles that are small. So I don't see why we need to belabor the notion of having bike lanes on Solano Avenue when we have so many functioning bike routes throughout the city that take you to Solano and are adjacent to Solano and really serve the purpose of access to Solano Avenue. I hope the council will consider this, consider my opinion and the opinion of the other speakers who have spoken against this unnecessary expense, and further to consider the delay that this action will take on providing for pedestrian safety. We don't need to wait 10 years to fix Solano. Let's do it now.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, this is Erica Ferguson. Oops, I'm sorry. Double audio. I just want to agree with the last speaker 100%. I think that it is extremely important that we support our small business community here in Albany. I'm a small business owner myself, and I cannot express how incredibly difficult it is to run a profitable company in this climate right now. We're facing unprecedented rises in insurance rates, workers' comp, liability, labor cost, product cost, tariff threats are, you know, scaring every single business owner. You've got the DoorDash thing ruining the business profitability of restaurants. The, Solano has been thriving in the last few decades, and I would hate to see that die away because of the challenges that lack of access to people that come from outside of Albany would do to our business communities. I think it's naive of us to assume that the people that patronize Solano Avenue are only from our community around us, that people are coming from far away to eat on Solano and walk around and enjoy our beautiful town. Yeah, and so I think that, you know, we need to support our businesses 100%, and I would be very concerned about the loss of parking. I'd be concerned about the neighbors. It is already extremely almost impossible to park on Solano. I also would be concerned about mothers with babies getting out of their cars, trying to navigate from their car to the sidewalk around the bike paths. I'd be concerned about our seniors. We have an aging population. It's just not as practical as I think it is. I've seen these bike lanes in other cities. I get the idea. I get it. It's cool, but I just think it does not work in Albany, and it does not work on Lower Solano. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Eileen, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Eileen Sheehan. I'm a 20, I think, 28-year resident of Albany. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak with you, and I speak to you focusing as a person who has many family members who bicycle. I have used public transportation, AC Transit especially, but also BART for many, many years. And I do occasionally drive, but I really have concerns about this spending any additional taxpayer dollars on further study, as well as the concept that that active transportation, in the view of some folks, seems to only involve creating more access for bike lanes on Solano. And I hear no effort being spent on encouraging more public transit. And that's such a key part of climate change strategies and also encouraging pedestrians on Solano. And I am someone who walks. I take, I take, I take public transit all the time. I do use a car occasionally. But I find it, I'm a little concerned about bicyclist's attitude that somehow that's, that what works for them is going to work for everyone. We have, you know, we have people who are carrying, maybe doing, carrying two kids. Some of them can bike, but not all of them can bike and carry groceries and, and carry the laundry. I think that's just very unrealistic. So I guess my question is, before any more money is spent on, you know, the remaining $11,000 that might be available, I'd like to hear whether you've reached out to AC Transit to talk with them about their buses and, and the maneuverability. It was great that you got the fire, folks from the fire department to speak, but I feel there is just a kind of an air of unrealism among folks who think we're just going to put these two bike lanes in, or even one bike lane, and somehow that's going to work for everyone. I'd like to hear similar effort expended to supporting pedestrians as well as more public transit and supporting our businesses on Solano. I simply, and as it is, I'm someone who walks all the time with, with, with a stroller for my grand, my granddaughter and with my three-year-old grandson, and I cannot tell you the number of times bicyclists have driven straight. Okay, thank you.
Hello. Thank you for giving me another chance to talk. It's very difficult taking care of children and attending these meetings, and thank you for letting me make a virtual comment. My daughter attends Ocean View Elementary, and my son attends Albany Middle School, and biking is our primary form of transportation. I, it works just fine for me to do grocery shopping, take my daughter to school, do everything I need to do by bike. And I strongly support adding bike lanes in both directions on Solano Avenue. Currently, riding a bike on Solano feels really unsafe. The high-traffic volume often leads to drivers speeding around cyclists in a really aggressive manner. Additionally, the diagonal parking makes it difficult for drivers to see when backing out. So I'm left choosing between riding in the middle of the lane for better visibility or closer to the parked cars to let drivers pass me. But either way, it's really scary. While we regularly shop on Solano, I always plan my route to avoid having to bike on it. Sometimes I think about other stores that it would be nice to shop at while I'm out, but the options of either biking on Solano or going all the way out to Washington and all the way back again, just to go down a couple blocks, just seem really unappealing, and so I just don't do additional shopping. So I do less shopping on Solano Avenue because I don't feel safe biking there. My son has started venturing out on his own and enjoys getting boba with friends, but I've had to tell him that he's not allowed to bike on Solano because it's too dangerous. So he's probably going there, shopping there less as well, and his friends less, because biking's not safe on Solano. I urge you to move forward with adding bike lanes in both directions. If, if you need to compromise and not remove any parking spots, option one adds at least one bike lane and does not remove, only removes one total parking spot. And I like that option one at least removes the diagonal parking next to the sharrows, because biking in the same lane where cars back out is, feels really unsafe and should be avoided at all costs. So thank you so much for making Solano Avenue safe and accessible for everybody, and including all ages and abilities and modes of transportation. Thanks. Good night.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi there. I live a half a block off Solano, and so I walk and bike on Solano Avenue pretty much every day. I talk to families with young kids. I met a new family just the other day when they were pulling their bike off one of the bike bike racks, and all of them want to be able to ride their bike safely with their families and access all the businesses by Solano, on Solano Avenue. Asking people to ride a long block out of their way in both directions to access one particular business isn't practical, and, I mean, if we're going to do that, why not ask drivers to do that? Why just single out the bicyclists? You want to be able to ride, ride where you're going, see, notice other businesses. So you remember those 80 bike bike racks that I mentioned earlier? 57 of them, 57 of those 80s, so that's 71% are on Solano Avenue, are on a side street within a half a block off Solano. They're used, but they can be used more without kids needing to ride on the sidewalks, which is illegal and encroaches on pedestrian space, which nobody wants to do. But you got to be safe. I see people riding on, on the sidewalk because they don't feel safe and comfortable. So please, create safe, separated bike facilities. That's the only truly complete streets, is making Solano Avenue safe for people of all ages and abilities. That includes kids, and that includes seniors like me, okay? To make cycling improvements, not only improvements for pedestrians, make them all. If need be, add more ADA parking spaces for people who truly need to park in front of their business. I absolutely empathize for that. When I had a broken leg, I had an ADA tag because I needed to park right in front of where I was going. So I really can empathize with that. It's pretty painful. So add some more ADA spots. Since I live half blocks off Solano, people are, I see drivers parking on my block all the time. They're coming from Martinez or Oakland or Berkeley or wherever, and they walk to Solano Avenue, and they happily spend their money. Extra, add a bonus, when you walk extra blocks, you walk on Solano, you notice other businesses that you may patronize in the future. So you're not just parking in front of your business, buying your one item and leaving. You're seeing other things. You're seeing, you're noticing people. And in the big picture, since half of Albany's emissions are from motor vehicles, our climate action really requires us to respond and make active transportation safer via Solano Avenue bike lanes. And there's one woman who can't access, she's trying to call in on the Zoom, and she can't register. She can only register for May 19th, Sarah Ziba. So if she, she's riding her bike on over, if she shows up late, please let her speak. She's on her way. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hello. Oh, no, it says I'm somebody that I'm not. I'm E.J. Crowley. I'm a member of the public. I'm relatively ambivalent about a Solano bike lane, but I have noticed in many of these comments, I've heard the bike lane advocates reference multiple studies and research stating the bike lanes will improve both safety and improve business engagement, while it seems the non-bike lane side seems to unanimously use anecdotal observations. So again, I'm ambivalent about a bike lane, but I think we should make decisions based on established research, and ignoring that research seems foolish. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, that concludes our public comment for the item. We'll bring it back to council for discussion. And I know we've heard quite a few different viewpoints. We've had very, very solid presentation earlier from city staff. And I would love that we use this opportunity to at least come to a potential agreement on how to move forward, rather than kicking the can down the road. So if anyone wants, would love to start the sparring session. Let's go for it. Go for it, John.
So moved here in 2005, and Lower Solano, I think Lower Solano for its time was ahead of its time. Took an old right-of-way. It really made it more cohesive. Would have loved back-end angle parking, but that would have been really cutting-edge in, in the time that this, that project was done. But you can see the long-term impact, right? When I was here in 2005, Lower Solano was still a little sleepy. We had an Albany Twins, but it was still a little sleepy. And it took a while, right? It took a while. New businesses came in, things changed. And now it's the most active part of Solano Avenue. That used to be, you know, the most active part of Solano used to be the part, the top of Solano in Berkeley, right? And that, that energy moved down to us. And at the same time, I understand, like, riding a bike, even on Lower Solano, or frankly, any part of Solano, is challenging. And, and I choose to ride today, but I have an e-bike. And I am definitely a much more confident rider than I was in 2005 today. But if we're talking about being a city that's all ages and all abilities, I don't know that Solano will ever be that, but it can be more inclusive. And it could expand who, who could use it. And so if, I have, I've been thinking about Solano Avenue since 2005, when I saw Lower Solano and what could happen on the rest of it. I was on the project team that worked in 2018, 2019. We were, our team, my, my office's role was really about where the murals going, drawing the pretty perspectives. It was less about what happened in the right-of-way. But the constraints then are still the same constraints we have today. It's a truck route. It's a bus route. It's a major fire, fire EMS response route. If something happens on Marin, Solano's the next best east-west road, right? We heard the chief say that, you know, if you're, they're going really far east on Solano, on reporting something to Solano, they're likely to choose Marin first, because they know that there's, it's a little bit easier to move. Something happens on Marin, they can take the median. They have a lot of options. So, you know, when I looked to run for council, I spoke to all, many of the sitting council members, and the number one thing I was told I would hear is, it's complicated. And I understand that in the realm of the work that I do. And I understand in the realm of what we're talking about here on Solano Avenue. I didn't realize that it's even more complicated than what I normally do. What I normally do, I draw a pretty drawing. I draw it in section. And I'm like, please, 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 let this work in plan, much the way the staff showed us with a turning radius and whatnot. But then, you know, I was, my, my work ended. I wasn't there when soil samples were done. So like we heard on Marin, we do not want to dig down on Marin, nor what we heard on Solano Avenue. There is a beautiful, wonderful concrete base under Solano Avenue, and it's movable, but it's a nice base. So what I have told staff in jokingly is that if, if we as the city could win Powerball, win one of those tremendous pots, you know, I, I would, I would be thrilled for us as a city to have a street where we could consider all options in the world, because money wouldn't be a limiting factor. But it is. It is. And so I have a whole series of things, alternatives, that I've been thinking about. And I don't know where this council will go. If this council chooses to say, let's not move the curbs, let's, but let's make it, let's make the rest of Solano be consistent with Lower Solano in the sense that it's 60-degree angle parking. We have sidewalks that are uniformly at least 10 feet, that we have room for our fire trucks, that we look at, well, what improvements can we do on a design that was done in the mid-'90s, right? Whether that's providing a buffer between the parking and the travel lane, so that there is more room that people know they shouldn't be right next to the parked cars, whether that you're a bicyclist or another vehicle. That's, that's option if we go down a route where we're not changing anything. Councilmember Jordan is the one that, or one of the people that originated the idea of a single cycle track heading north. And I will tell you that it's taken me a while to get comfortable with that plan. But my alternative to that one, were we to go that route, is actually flip it. Just say, let's be consistent with what we already have, which is, put the parallel parking on the south side, put the diagonal parking on the north side, and be, have the same exact cross-section we have in front of Cornell School. Take that cycle track and make it at the same level of the sidewalk. Because if you make it at the same level sidewalk, when you pour that concrete, it's a bike lane. If we realize that it is causing us way too many problems, because people are riding the wrong way, or it's causing too many intersection problems, you scrape off the bike lane paint, but we have now an incredibly wide, beautiful sidewalk, just like we have in front of Cornell. There's another reason why I would advocate for that. A large number of our parklets are on the north side of the street, and by keeping the diagonal parking on the north side of the street, while those parklets might have to be rebuilt, because the, that they were allowed to build varied, depending on how big the parking space was, those parklets could come back, right? I understand, though, that what that means is we are asking people heading west on Solano Avenue to continue what I do when I ran a Solano, is worry the hell that someone's going to back up into them, right? But what I will say is, in general, on Solano Avenue, I found the people backing up are already worried about getting hit by a car. So they're usually going slowly. No traffic engineer will tell you to do what I just said, because you open a level of risk. But it is the risk that we already have on Lower Solano, right? We already have the risk on Lower Solano that you're riding your bike behind back, behind head-in parking. I'll leave the back-end angle parking for another day, because that doesn't sound like it has any, any, any way of moving forward. And then I, then I land on the, yes, it's going to be really expensive to do a cycle track in each direction. And there is a cost. There is a cost in the amount of on-street parking that we have. There is a cost in the sense that our parklets, any parklets that were to be rebuilt, the parking spot is eight feet wide. The reality is, your parklet can only take up six of that, because you need a little bit of space between that travel lane and the actual vertical surface of your parklet. And so what we're saying is, we're still going to have parklets, but they're not going to be quite as deep or as enjoyable as they were in the past. There are concerns about that bike lane and getting to the parklet. I think, given the number of bicyclists, you know, if we were to get close to the level of bicyclists that we get on the Loney Greenway, which I don't expect we would get, I think we would get a lot, but I don't think we'd get that level, then it would be, I think, a major issue for people, for, for patrons of the restaurants taking their food to the parklet. But I think, I think, I don't, I don't think that will be as big of an issue as has been raised at some, at, at some point. I don't know where I land on this. I mean, I'm, I definitely, as council picks a direction, I have nuances on any three of these schemes. I will say that one of the things that, when I served on Traffic and Safety, now the Transportation Commission, when we wrote the first ATP, I wish I could go back and Commission, when we wrote the first ATP, I wish I could go back and kick myself under the table and say, "Go big." Because some of the things that were in that plan are just starting to be talked about getting put in the CIP. And there were things that I said, "Hey, let's not put these in this, in, in the active transportation plan because let's save our money for other things. Oh, this is, we're going to relook this in five years, or this is all going to get built in five years." Well, guess what? It didn't. And now the things, I'm particularly talking about mini-traffic circles north of Solano on many of the north-south streets, I wish I had kept those in the plan. I wish I had not been the one actually advocating, "Let's remove that to simplify the list of projects that the staff could go after." And so I guess what I would end on is, like, we have an opportunity to dream big. We have an opportunity in our lifetime, in our kids' lifetime, may, maybe in our grandkids' lifetime, Solano Avenue might have a chance to be relooked at. Though we are talking about doing something that will last thirty or forty years. Only thing that I think we can be more impactful about the long-term of this city is little piece of land on the water that we have no control over. But this Solano Avenue is an opportunity to think about our community thirty or forty years from now and what we want that street to feel like. I have all kinds of pretty drawings, but I don't think we need to get into that unless you all want to see them.
Thank you, Councilmember Mickey. Any other folks here on the dice have contributed that to the discussion?
Yeah, I think, I think this is really hard because we can, we can study this for the next ten years, and realistically, the street's not going to grow. It's not going to get any wider. You know, it doesn't matter how long we study it, it'll probably be the same. If it, if something happens that gets wider, we've got other problems. I don't think it can be everything for everyone. And it concerns me when we have the fire chief here saying, "He's concerned. He's concerned about life safety. If they can't get around, if they can't get around the city, it could be devastating to someone." We need to hear that. We, we need to listen to that. We have our business owners here and online and in email saying, "I need people to be able to come to my business, case of Flowerland, with a car that they can carry home a hundred pounds of flowers, or a hundred pounds of soil, or whatever they carry home." They can't do that on a bike. So it's, it's, there have to be some compromises. You know, our business community right now, you go on Solano Avenue in the evening or on the weekend, it's, it's happening. There's a lot of people there, there's people enjoying the parklets, there's people in the restaurants, people are enjoying themselves. We need to support our business community. We need to take care of our women-owned, our immigrant businesses. They're really important to this community, and we need to not drive them out of town. You know, we always talk about we have such a vibrant business community. Well, if the businesses can't maintain and sustain themselves, we're not going to have a vibrant business community. We're going to have a lot of empty storefronts. You know, and I think the parklets have really added a lot to the, to the avenue and to the community. And the bicycle lanes, regardless of how we look at them, are going to impact that. They also were built at considerable cost to the business owners. And I know the city was, you know, helpful and whatever, but it's a little disrespectful to come back now and say, "Nah, now we want you to do this, or we want you to do that." It's just, we really need to uplift our businesses, I think, and this is one way to do it. You know, one of the things that we read a lot about in our society today is we plan a lot, but we don't do anything. We spend a lot of time planning. I think that's Ezra Klein's main theory of his book. This is an opportunity to actually, to do one of two things, to keep planning or to actually do something and move forward on Solano and get some improvements in that we can, that will enhance the, the street. So I would support moving ahead without the bicycle infrastructure at all, and then putting emphasis on bicycle infrastructure in the rest of the city and be able to, to move some of that forward.
Thank you, Vice Mayor McQuade. I see Councilmember Jordan is hitting the hotkey.
Yeah, I guess this is a clarifying question. When I, I developed this cross-section with the one-way uphill cycle track and switching parking to parallel downhill, it was with Masonic and East only in mind. So I don't know, I realize I don't know what context people have in mind, but I don't have in mind changing Solano. My proposal was not change Solano between Masonic and San Pablo because it works. Whether there's this cycle track included or not, talking about essentially rebuilding Solano if you want to make it as pedestrian-friendly, east of Masonic, because it is west of Masonic, because the curb extensions do not go out nearly far enough. Sidewalks are only six feet wide in a lot of places, four feet wide in some places. I'm not actually sure why that is. I presume the city owns ten feet back of curb, but in a lot of the place on the, the south side, the edge of the sidewalk, it's only six feet back from curb. So I think the project, whatever it is, is going to look very similar to the project in the late '90s, which was shortly after I moved here, which was rebuilding Solano between Masonic and San Pablo, which is pretty much a complete tear-down and rebuild from bottom up. In this case, maybe the curbs can stay in position. I think that needs to be researched more, whether the sidewalks need to be wider, if, if the sidewalks, you know, if the city only owns that six feet, then you add in posts and everything else. We only have like a four-foot clear space, which is no good for a walkable business district at all. So I think on the pedestrian side, which, you know, I absolutely support, and part of the reason I came up with this section was to expand the width of the sidewalks, which the plan we've seen keeps the sidewalks the way they are, or at least keeps the curbs where they are currently. And, and I was interested in making a better pedestrian environment than we have on Lower Solano currently. Because even on Lower Solano, there's places now where it's only four and a half feet wide, like in front of As You Wish, or I think As You Wish, the, the Froyo Place, because they have seats in front, which I support. And then there's a tree tree right there, and in between the two, there's four and a half feet, and that's including the tree well. So it's just too constrained the way it is now. Were you wanting to?
This is a clarifying question. When you said expand the sidewalk, were staff, were staff and the consultants did their drawings, they were showing ten feet? Is ten feet in that part of Solano, as you mentioned, and other places it's different? Were you, when you drew your cross-section, were you anticipating that the curb had to move, or were you anticipating that, that the sidewalk could be extended back into some, sometimes landscaping that area is in front of business?
Right. So I didn't, I mean, you anticipated the sidewalk as it currently exists would go out to the limit of the right-of-way, which taking eighty feet means that those areas where it's only six feet back from curb, city needs to reclaim that four feet to get the ten feet.
That's, that's, sorry, that's expanding the sidewalk without necessarily moving the curb?
Right. And so the section I drew did move the curb on the north side to make it twelve feet instead of ten feet. So you had an eight-foot clear with four foot, four street trees. Now, value engineering, I'm not holding fast to that. I think that would provide a, a better business district in terms of walking. Again, my intention was only Masonic East, and so I don't know why we wouldn't put in a cycling facility at least one direction when it basically doesn't cost any parking. I mean, we see twenty-seven to twenty-six, but that's in a very preliminary analysis. I was involved as an advocate, and I should say, I came up with this section, you know, long before I was on council, presented it, and it was unanimously voted that it should be studied by each of three advisory bodies, which to my, my experience was unprecedented. And, and by analogy, I was involved in putting a cycling path, multi-use path on the west side of Pier Street in the 500 block. And that, in the initial design, reduced the parking by maybe ten percent. And, you know, that obviously, for reasons that came forward, that they gave you condominiums, they only have one space condominium, so they really relied on those spaces, was objectionable. And the engineer, you know, as design progressed and you go on, went into more and more detail, they basically didn't lose any parking spaces. So for a four percent loss of parking space at this, spaces at this point, again, I don't know why we wouldn't do that. The current ATP commits a Solano project to making conditions safer for cycling on Solano. So if we don't do that, then we're actually going backwards from the current ATP. And as was mentioned, we have a greenhouse pollution reduction plan, and it calls for reducing vehicle miles traveled by twenty-five percent. That is not the only means to reduce pollution, that's just one of the measures it has, also obviously electrification. And since the time of that plan adoption, VMT hasn't, hasn't reduced. Now it's reduced about seven percent from the peak. And, you know, I think there was a lot of hearsay about difficulty of people to cross between their motor vehicles and businesses on the sidewalk. I will note that AARP actually has reports supporting the addition of cycling facilities on streets because it has been found through research, and when you add cycling facilities, the street gets safer for everybody because it just slows everybody down and tends, yeah, tends to produce, promote better street design. So I supported, we're only going to put a cycling lane on one side so that we maintain the parking, do it in the uphill direction because that'd be the slower direction, that's where the speed differential is greater with motorists overtaking cyclists. And in the downhill direction, cyclists can get closer to, to motor speed, especially now that we've lowered the speed limit to twenty miles per hour. The key difference was making the parking parallel there to, to make it safer. So it actually meets what our current ATP says and doesn't take us backwards. So again, I, I can't understand why we wouldn't, why we wouldn't improve, take this opportunity to improve that section of Solano when it's going to get rebuilt under any scenario. And I, as far as parklets, I mean, this, if, no matter what we approve, whether it's rebuild Solano, rebuild what I call mid-Solano, the same as Lower Solano, or rebuild it with a cycling lane, it's going to be tens of millions of dollars, and it's not going to happen for probably a decade at least. If it happens in a decade, I would be quite pleased if it happened that quickly. So those parklets are the capital that went into them, which is mostly the city's capital via, or actually the federal government's capital, is going to be amortized by then. And there's relatively few parklets on this section of Solano, which is longer as compared to the lower section, and I think that's in part because the design doesn't support the vibrancy that Lower Solano has.
I guess it's my turn. So obviously, there's two of my largest concerns, well, actually, three of my largest concerns because the safety and the fire vehicles and emergency response time is, is a high priority for me. But just money. I mean, we don't have it, so how can we spend it? And as you mentioned, you know, it, by the time that it would get done, maybe all of this is completely rethought a hundred times over, and now we're going back to the planning stages of having to start over again and replan. One of the things that I'd like to see, and I agree with you, and the wider sidewalks, wider sidewalks would be lovely because I do know that those, those little pinch points are difficult to get around. But I also, you know, I want to be able to see, you know, I, I think a lot of the, the cycling around business districts, a lot of the studies, has been different because a lot of those are level areas. They're not uphill, they're not going uphill Solano. I heard a comment earlier that people from out of town come and park on the side street, and then they get out of their car and they walk around, and then they go and do, you know, more shopping that way. But it was really funny that on the flip side of that, I heard that a cyclist would have to go back and forth down the blocks, but why couldn't they just park on one of those, I think it was eighty-something bike racks that was mentioned? Couldn't they park their bike on that and still walk down the street just as a person in a car would have? It doesn't seem like it's a big difference to me on that, you know? And then ultimately, it's really dependent on the businesses because, like we've heard from multiple businesses, they use their facilities in different ways, right? Yes, it's true, maybe you're running into Feelgood and you're in and out on your bike and all's well, but when I'm on Solano in my car, I'm not only going to my office, I'm, you know, grabbing lunch, I'm going to the grocery store, I'm picking up kids, I'm running an errand here and there. I mean, there's so many things I'm doing on Solano, and I could not possibly do as much in a day on a bicycle as I can with a car. Now, if I had plenty of time on my hands, maybe that wouldn't be a big factor, but I have a lot of constraints. I also live on Pier Street, so biking to Solano up and over that hill and back up another hill is not really, you know, time conducive to my needs, you know? The other factor that I have concerns with too is, we're talking about all this extra funding and money and everything being spent into improving the infrastructure of primarily bike lanes. I think I heard, and maybe I'm wrong, but, you know, I've, as the bicycles have become more motorized and, you know, more powerful, that they are going to also need to be treated more like a motor vehicle because that's essentially what they are becoming. And if they're becoming another motor vehicle, then I feel like those motorized vehicles should also have to pay some of the same taxes and fees and registrations and licensing requirements. And, you know, then it gets into the phases of certain streets may be more usable or user-friendly to cer, certain cyclists of certain capabilities. Much like, for example, when a driver gets a driver's license, you can go in, get a Class C or a Class A or, you know, motorcycle license. Those drivers then are licensed to be competent and capable of driving a certain type of vehicle in a certain area. And maybe that's what we're now having to go towards. And then on top of that, I'd like to see who's going to enforce all of that. Because we also don't have the city's staff or resources or police. If somebody starts, you know, using those lanes or something inappropriately, who's going to be there to enforce it? I don't know if anybody's seen the big dirt bike gang that comes down Solano almost every, like, weekend or whatever, but there's probably thirty to fifty of them, most of them not wearing helmets, on dirt bikes, almost using a side street. How is that going to affect things on our streets? The primary thing is, I really feel like if you're going to talk any more cycling or any more loss of parking, each and every business needs to be talked to because they don't have enough time to react, they don't have, a lot of them don't have enough time to come to these meetings. And if you put in something that affects their business negatively and they close, what are you going to cycle to?
Thank you very much. I'll say that, excuse me, my voice has had them in the strongest last several days. So you won't get the typical long-winded responses from me today. But I will say, I do echo some of the statement that Councilmember Jordan has shared about our current commitment to the ATP. our current commitment to the ATP, and that to not follow through at least, at least an inch in that effort, we're not doing our due diligence as leaders in a climate crisis. And to me, that's first and foremost, my priority, just given my own respective background in environmental science, and the many commitments I've made regionally and locally to fight in the climate crisis. I don't think the premise of any of our arguments should be bike versus vehicle and such because that's not the hill I want any of us to die on, whether or not we're supporting vehicle usage or not. That can also get really testy and really combative. Though I do think there's room for opportunity for potential compromise. Should that opportunity present itself, there are opportunities to interact and engage with business owners if we give that direction to city staff, and that's what I was trying to allude to earlier, if we can come to some type of consensus or agreement, or at least something that appeases folks here. We're not necessarily making a end-all-be-all decision this evening, and we don't have to. We can certainly look at what committing to our ATP, current ATP, looks like while also accounting for what it looks like to engage our business owners and surveying them if that warrant being a necessity. I do want to emphasize, there's also opportunity to direct city staff to look at revision Solano that had more accessible parking, ADA parking. I know that has come up as well, you know, around EV parking. And though I'm, you know, I just made the comment around we're in a climate crisis, I will also acknowledge that if we were to put EV parking only stationed along Solano, then that prohibits people who don't have EV vehicles or EV options from parking there. So there's really, and that's why I say I don't want us to die on this hill of, you know, who's using the car and who's not using the car or bike or whatever, because I don't think that should be the premise of our argument here or the point that we're trying to make. I do want to hone in, though, that we are in a climate crisis, we are in a climate emergency, that we owe it to our communities and to our future generation. I don't get too cultural all the time. Those of you who follow me on social media, you know what, you know what time it is. But I do always allude to the work of my ancestors and what that means for my descendants. And I do think about my son and my daughter and the children that they may have and what a society might look like for them. And so naturally, that leads me to talking to at least some of my daughter's friends. I don't know if I'm able to talk to some of my son's friends. A lot of babbling, two years old. Apparently, I found out that boy ate chicken nuggets today. I don't know if I'm doing my job and fighting the climate crisis on the healthy end. But I'm talking with some of the high school students, and more specifically, some of the young scholars who are residents of the UC Village, and I bring up the UC Village as a talking point because, I don't know if all of you are aware, I know I brought this up several times, but the UC Village now charges folks to park. So this idea of owning a car is becoming more and more cost prohibitive for student parents that live in the village like myself. And it's hard to keep up with those costs now that they've layered in additional cost to parking and also have increased our rent 4% continually over the last four years now. And so these are costs that directly impact some of our most vulnerable and most minoritized community members here in Albany. And just my anecdotal observation is, there's far less vehicles in the village, which is great if you have guests who come over in vehicles who need a place to park. And I understand that this is also part of UC Berkeley's initiative to reduce their carbon footprint and reduce people's need to depend on vehicles, encourage us to use more public transportation. But the point that I'm getting to and what I'm trying to connect is that, anecdotally, and it's not rooted in like any scientific research, but anecdotally, my observation again is that I've seen a lot more people using bikes coming out of the village. I want to give this specific example because I, like I said, when I first opened up, I'd been on the fence about, you know, how I want to, you know, where my support lays. And I've had conversations with city staff and understanding what plans or ideas and visions could look like. But I was talking to one of my daughter's friends a few months back, and my daughter had reminded me earlier that her friend who recently had moved over here, and again, for those of you who aren't super aware, there are a lot of people who come and move to Albany in the middle of their teenage years, and sometimes in the middle of the school year because housing finally opens, and so they're in a new community that they think is safe and they're not too familiar with it. And this young child, this young teenager, thought like it would be safe for her to ride her bike down Solano to go to school because it seemed like the most quickest route. And unfortunately, she got hit by a car, and she hasn't been on her bike since because she's scared. And she had emphasized that Solano just doesn't feel safe for her. To my knowledge, she doesn't go or walk on Solano unless she's with friends and feels safe. And for me, that's disheartening to hear. And I'm not trying to use it as any fear-mongering tactic or anything like that, but I do want to highlight that there, we're probably going to see a huge spike in number of folks who do rely on bicycle transportation to move about in Albany, particularly out of the UC Village. And I want us to be aware of that, that, again, some of the most minoritized and vulnerable community members in our community are, this idea of having a vehicle has become extremely cost prohibitive, and they are relying on pedestrian and cycling facilities to be able to navigate the city more safely. Lastly, one of the, one of the final things I do want to emphasize, I know I said I wouldn't be as long-winded, my voice is going to regret this later. But I do want to highlight that we, as a community, and I think this kind of jumps springboard's off as something that Councilmember Mickey was alluding to, that we do have an opportunity to do something and to commit to something that sustains for generations to come, and it may not be the most popular decision that we make today, and maybe not everyone agrees with it in the moment, but if it's what enables our city to at least have a fighting chance to be sustainable and strive in a challenging climate and challenging society, I think that's a commitment we have to really think about whether or not we want to make that. All ended with just saying that I am, me personally, I am in favor of some form of cycling facility, something that does present a certain degree of safety for pedestrians and cyclists to go up and down Solano. And that was the other thing. This isn't to attack or anything, Councilmember Hanson Romero, the use of a bike and going down a couple of blocks, I believe that came from a parent. And so something for me personally, sometimes when I'm biking with my children, I am not comfortable leaving my own mode, my own method of transportation out of eyesight, and so sometimes that's why people travel with their bike, even if it's just a block or two down. Because if that's their only mode of transportation and they got little ones with them, it's tough luck, and not everyone can afford to get the rideshare or whatever, what have you. Not implying that that person's specific situation, but that may be the case of why sometimes people move their bikes up and down Solano, similar to like why people move their cars up and down Solano, they want it within eyesight. Not implying that Albany's an unsafe community. I think we do a pretty good job in keeping people safe. But again, I do support some form of cycle facility on Solano, and again, we don't need to make any specific commitments right now. We could, the task at hand for city staff could be to continue to explore this and such that it's in alignment with our commitment to the current ATP, and we can also account for any other potential recommendations to engage or survey with our local business owners or at least find ways in which they feel empowered should there be any changes. Because the changes aren't going to happen overnight, and they're not going to be drastic in the sense of, we're not going to say we're adding cycling facilities starting next week, and tough luck. And it's not to be dismissive of local business owners either, I know it's a challenge, but I think if there is a mutually agreeable way in which we can achieve communication and work with, work with folks and understand what the needs and expectations are, maybe we could do this as best as possible. It's not going to be perfect, it's not going to be a walk in the park by any means, but we can at least set the gold standard for what other communities should be doing, especially again, while we're in the heat of a climate crisis. I'm sure folks still have quite a bit to say, and I won't entertain a motion at this time, I do want to hear what colleagues have to say.
I thank you, Mayor Lopez. I'll pull up my notes. Yeah, I wanted to thank Councilmember Hanson Romero. I think, you know, anything that is done on Solano Avenue is, whether it's doing what is on Lower Solano, not put specific bicycle facilities, or it's putting some form of bicycle facility, is going to have different effects on different businesses. And so I love Flowerland, I love shopping at Flowerland. I often will go there after having coffee and riding my bike. I go home with a plant about this big when I go home on my bike, and I dream about taking home some of their beautiful maple trees. And that's obviously something that I need to bring a car for, and for that, you need loading and you need space. And I think, you know, as whatever work goes forward, we have to work with those, those business owners, just like we would have to work with Safeway, to make sure that their deliveries can still happen in the building that they have. I particularly appreciate the laundromat owner who came here, you know, that is a business that serves our community, and it serves, generally speaking, I would say, a part of the community that doesn't have as many choices. And so services like laundromats are hugely important. I've worked in so many communities where they have said, no, laundromats are allowed. And it was their way of getting around saying, we don't want people who can't afford a washer and dryer. And so I think those are the kind of services our existing users, that we need to understand how to make this work. And to me, that's what I like about Alternative 1, is that we can provide similar, if not the same amount of parking, and provide a better bicycle environment. I don't think it's a particularly safe, I don't think it's all ages and all abilities, but it is better than what we have. And so I do want to address that. From a cost standpoint, the engineering is the engineering. There might be a little bit more when we're moving one curb. Absolutely, there's going to be more if you build Alternative 2 the way I want it built. I guarantee you. And so, but what I say there is that if we build something like Lower Solano on the Restless Solano Avenue, or we pick Alternative 1, the cost difference is somewhere, it's going to be, it's going to be at a base starting at 30 million no matter what, right? And it's going to go up a little bit, it's going to go up really depending on how much are we moving likely, infrastructure that's underground. It's not about the concrete they pour, it's about all the utilities they move underground. And that, and that's why I say, absolutely, I think the cycle track in each direction is going to hit $50 million if you build the cycle track at the level of the sidewalk because you are, you're redoing all the stormwater infrastructure. What I understood from staff was Marin Avenue needs stormwater infrastructure improvements anyways, just like Marin Avenue. So we're going to be spending some money on that. So that's why I say, likely the difference between Alternate 1 and just continue what Lower Solano has, probably not that big of a price difference. I don't know if staff agrees with me on that, but I have a feeling that they're going to be relatively similar. So I just want to get that on the record. This is not about suddenly, you know, a really inexpensive project versus putting bicycle facilities means we're spending $30 million. It's $30 million to rebuild all of Solano Avenue because it needs to be rebuilt. Sidewalks are a mess, there's really outdated street furniture and planter boxes that don't give room for trees to actually grow, right? Like, there are places where we don't have enough sidewalk. I will tell you that all of the cross-sections we're talking about, for the pedestrian realm, when I work in communities, I say, you want 12 feet. You want 12 feet from the face of that building to the face of that curb. We're getting 10. We're already compromising on our pedestrian realm. Regardless if you do Lower Solano, like the way Lower Solano is, or you do Alternative 1, or you do Alternative 2, my starting point is always 12, because 12 gives you two feet in front of the building, two feet, two feet off of the parking space, allows you to get some furniture and still have room to actually walk on Solano with someone standing next to you. And we're already moving to 10. So I, we are asking Solano Avenue to do a lot, and I think Alternate 1 is the compromise that gets us the parking we need, gets us a rebuilt street where we can actually have trees and real tree wells, where we can get our curb extensions consistent like Lower Solano, and provides more access by bicycle, scooter, skateboard, right? We keep talking about it as a bicycle lane, but it's not just bicycles that'll be using it. So, and as one of the members of the public mentioned, it's much nicer to walk by a bike lane than it is to walk by cars pulling in and out parking spaces. Are there dangers? Yes. Same way that there are dangers that a car could bump the curb and hit you on the sidewalk, particularly when we're talking about sidewalks that are four feet or six feet, where you don't have really space. I will also say that we are, we are simply picking the policy direction for staff to move forward with. We will get to see plans for every block and understand, how many parking spaces are we actually losing? Is there a way of engineering to get some more of those parking spaces back? Are there alternatives on side streets to get some more parking or provide more loading zones? I think the thing that resonated most with me and the issue I have with Alternative 2 is the fire department's concern. I believe that no matter what we do on Solano Avenue, the fire department is likely going to use Marin Avenue as much as they can to fight a fire on Solano. They're going to use Marin to get through someplace on Solano. But once they get on Solano, that's where they're going to run into issues. Or if, for whatever reason, they can't use Marin, my concern is that Solano, that Solano has to be able to be functional for them. And so I was very nervous when staff was telling me how many feet we had to work with because I was trying to squeeze, can we squeeze a little bit here and give a little bit there and whatnot? And, and it's very tight. I, Councilmember, Vice Mayor McQuaid said, you know, the street's not going to magically grow. I said, what I would give for this road to be either 10 feet narrower or 10 feet wider? 10 feet wider, we have a whole world of possibilities. 10 feet narrower, we're not talking about any of this. You're just not doing it. We wouldn't have, we would not have had diagonal parking on a 70-foot right-of-way. We would have had parallel parking. So we'd be having a completely different conversation. But that is, that is not the world we live in. We live in the world with a wonderful 80-foot street, but we are asking a lot of this street. And I can keep talking about this, I ain't drawing, again, show pretty pictures, but I think, given the time and knowing that other councilmembers may wish to continue conversation, I'll, I'll stop there.
Yeah, I'm wondering if, if we've all sort of said what we think and if we could take a vote. I think, I'm not sure that there's any more discussion that's going to be particularly useful, and as he said, the time is going by, so I would like to make.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think we're at a moment in time where I'm willing to entertain a motion.
I will move that as part of the development of the new active transportation plan, that staff further develop Alternative 1.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. City Clerk?
Councilmember Mickey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McQuaid?
No.
Council, Mayor Lopez?
Yep.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
No.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
In terms of aspects to consider, schematic as presented had a seven-foot wide cycle track with a four-foot wide buffer. I know it's just schematic. The design guidelines allow down to five feet, which could provide more room for emergency response on the road potentially. I'm also interested in that facility being narrower, and, and I think we're at a moment where some creativity is needed to include traffic calming features on a cycle track, so that people on e-dvices actually can go to the max speed. So I think narrowing it would help with that. My preference would be to narrow it to five and give the space, additional space over to the sidewalk. And so I'd be interested in adding more cost implications of, of giving a couple of feet more to the sidewalk in each side, just so we are making a decision based on those numbers, rather than just presuming.
I'd also suggest that we don't design it tonight, that we move, we've, we've given staff direction, did you get sufficient direction?
Yep.
I think we should stop there.
All right. Well, thank you, City Council colleagues, city staff, for joining us in another marathon of items. Moving on to item number 12, Council Subcommittee Reports. I will start from this side of the dice. Councilmember Mickey.
Have we met since, the finance meet since, oh, we didn't meet at the end of April, so we did. Did have a finance meeting.
Oh, yeah.
I'm going to need a second.
Like we said?
Yeah.
So the Subcommittee met with regards to ESG policy. If I remember correctly, no substantive decisions were made at the meeting, so we asked for more information. I have on my plate to do some more research as well. We also had a presentation and discussion about the unfunded pension liability and approaches. Again, no actions were taken, it was more informative, just understanding what our options are as a council.
Thank you, Councilmember Mickey. Vice Mayor McQuaid?
I attended, I attended the mayor's conference, really fabulous art opening at the community center. If you haven't been by to see it, it's wonderful. I think we had a Cal Cities East Bay Division meeting, I attended with Councilmember Mickey. I attended the Cal Cities Leadership Summit, or Leader Summit, and my report to that is attached. Councilmember Jordan and I were at the ribbon cutting at the Gilman Roundabouts, and so were you, I've forgotten, sorry. I should remember you, do your pictures. The mayor and I were at the dog park opening. Councilmember Hanson Romero and I were at the ribbon cutting for the for the sushi restaurant.
I thought you said Beyonce. I was like, you went to a Beyonce concert? What?
The mayor and I attended a creek walk today that I guess was sponsored by UC, UC Berkeley. And we also had our first Public Safety Ad Hoc Committee meeting.
Thank you, Vice Mayor McQuaid. I had attended the Earth Day event at the Giltrack Farm last weekend, and had also found myself volunteering with Vice Mayor McQuaid at the Albany Moving Groove 5K.
Volunteering, neither of us were running.
Nope, nope. The only thing you'll ever catch us running for is probably City Council. Had also got, we do have planned for, later this week, we've been having to go through back and forth with Subcommittee organization to meet quorum for Ava, for the Marketing, Regulatory and Legislative Subcommittee. So we are finally going to meet this Friday, assuming we have quorum. Also, as I mentioned, had attended the ribbon cutting for the enhanced dog, dog park facility over at Memorial Park. I believe, oh, yesterday, and this is partly why my voice is the way it is, I went to go visit some of my homies in Richmond, I was at the Cinco de Mayo Festival, found myself on the main stage with some of my elected colleagues over there in West Contra Costa. And that concludes my reports. Councilmember Jordan?
Thank you, Mayor. So the Alameda County Transportation Commission met since the, our last meeting. They announced the annual Platinum Sneaker winner, which is the, the contest for the school that has the highest percentage of children who get to school by active transportation or during a particular time period. And it was Lockwood Steam Academy, which is a, a school on International Boulevard in Oakland. 65% of its students took active or shared transportation, so transit or polling to school. And the winning school was Ms. Brenner's 3rd to 5th grade Special Education class with 94% participation, so. And they were there, which was, you know, great, we're all cheering. And then in other news, the, the agency announced its next executive director. It was Tony Tavares, who's the, for another month or two, is the Director of Caltrans. So that was, you asked me if I ever would have been supporting the Director of Caltrans to become the, the head of the local agency 10 years ago, I would have thought you were out of your mind. But I was on the interview committee, and he actually was able to change the culture of District 4 and Caltrans, you know, one of the directors actually get that done. So he's very skilled, very humble, and I'm very excited to have him come on board.
Other than the ribbon cutting, I actually don't think I have any updates for this. I unfortunately was unable to attend the last meeting at the last minute for stopways. Do know that I will be attending the JPA meeting coming up on Wednesday evening, so more to come on that.
Thank you. Also, I forgot to acknowledge that I had attended the Spring Dance Showcase at Albany High. Just blown away by the level of talent and creativity a lot of our young people have at the high school, and was very impressed and excited to see that the Friday event sold out. So that says a lot about the level of support that our local community of parents and families and just general community members have for the arts. Assuming we have no public comments, move on to item number 13, Future Agenda Item. Anything, any members from the public who would like to, okay, any members on council with Future Agenda Item? All right. We have upcoming meetings, which you can find on the City of Albany's newly revamped website. And with that said, join this meeting at 10:16 PM. Thank you all.